We'll call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask Sue, welcome everybody. I'll ask Sue, she'll do roll call, please.
Kim Winter?
Here.
Carrie Germaine?
Present.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Here.
Autumn Henry?
Here.
Chuck Melkey?
Here.
Ken Engel?
Here.
Andrea Fick is absent.
Andrea's running late, so. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, with that, I would invite everyone to join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're going to begin this meeting with an opportunity for public comment as we will be interviewing search firms for the superintendent selection. Anyone who'd like to address the board, please step forward. State your name. Keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
My three minutes or less?
Because that's our policy.
Well, you don't have my policy. She sat here last week and talked for 25 minutes.
So would you like to address the board?
Yeah, I want more than three minutes.
Well, you'll have three minutes.
And I'll come back up and get another three. I got a couple of concerns. I understand that we're talking about a new school. And you said, I heard that you was going to take and get some contracts drawn up or something for things. Well, I'll tell you something. I've got friends. I've got a person who lives in Linden who told me that she talked to a certain contractor. And he said he's already got the contract to build a new elementary school for Swords Creek. Is that true? So otherwise you're calling him a liar? Well, I got his name written down on a piece of paper, and I'm gonna give it to somebody. And at the end, we'll see if I'm right or not. Okay? Next thing I got is you're talking about buying a new piece of property, right? To build a school, am I not right? But yet you already bought a piece of property? Why can't you use the piece of property you bought that's in the city? It's got city water and city sewers. You got closer to the fire departments and ambulances and everything else. It's a safer place than going out of town and doing it. And I said it last time, and I listened to you when Josh, when Mr. Melkey was talking to Josh and you told him he couldn't do that. And three minutes later, you had a discussion with a guy with a camera telling you about the Fourth Amendment. Is that right how things happen? That you can do what you want to do? But they can't do what they want to do? Mr. Kitchin, you talk about safety for the kids. I know of one tree that's about 10 foot off the playground and about 10 foot from the swings. That's dead and in a debt, and it's dropping branches all the time. And I talked to somebody, and they said that they had a work order in for two years to get that tree cut down. We gonna wait for it to fall on a child? Before we get it done? Well, that's it should have been noticed a long time ago.
What playgrounds have I served?
At Moore School.
Okay, thank you.
You look back in the corner, you'll see it's dead and dead, and there's a bunch of branches around the bottom and just fell since school started. So. Another thing for the kids. You see the thing you guys give them to eat with? Okay? This is a straw you give them to drink their chocolate milk and wet milk with. They got 10 minutes to eat. It take them 10 minutes to drink their milk through a straw like this. My wife and I go down, we buy straws for her class. For the kids who drink their milk. And a lot of them, that's what they do, they drink their milk, otherwise they throw most of their away. Which I think that the schools should provide straw, regular straws for the kids, not the little dinky thing that you stir hot chocolate with. It surprised me when Mr. Engel told me that you had 53, was it 53 credit cards? 51 credit cards? Can I get one of them?
Sir, your time is up, please. And did you state your name for this recording?
I'm one of your employers.
Sir, would you please state?
Don't tell me, don't tell me, because I heard last week. I'm one of your employers, and these are your employers, some of them. These are the people who elect you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I'm going home and get hot meal, and I'll watch the rest of the time.
Well, I'm back. My name is Debbie Bush, and I live on Hill Road. And I spoke before about some of my concerns about the school. And I know that a committee has been formed and future negotiations, and you're trying to come up with some decisions. I had some thoughts on, before all of this started. I never heard of any concerns about our school as far as, well, you know, they're getting old, or this and that. What I heard was, let's get a millage and put some safety features into place for our children and some repairs that were needed, which I believe two millages have been passed for that. And now, we've got this mega site that has dangled this carrot. I'm gonna give you $40 million, or I'm gonna give you $50 million. And like I said, I really feel that that property that the school is on is the key to this mega site. I think that in order for them to be able to further develop or get interest on it, they're gonna have to get rid of that school there. So let's say you relocate the school. And originally, at the last meetings that I were at, you was looking at like Gaines Township. One of the concerns I have about that is this. The school that you have right now by Morris has other safety features in it, like a tornado shelter. They're within a mile of a fire department. They have Monday Township Police ready to whatever happens at the school. Come on down to Gaines Township. We have no police. We have a limited fire department, which we recently got in a new truck. You'd be building a school, but you couldn't guarantee you'd be putting a tornado shelter in. We have to look at every feature besides a brand spanking new school. You have to look at what your township wants. You have to realize that parents I'm gonna, I don't know what your thing that you sent out for that question and answer thing is, because I've never seen it. But we have parents here that have kids in that school, and they're depending on our board to listen to their concerns. And they don't want to relocate their kids if they don't have to see any other reasons to. If you came and told me, Debbie, you gotta relocate your kids to another school so many miles away, because we want a factory to come in here. I'd be saying, well, shoot spitfire, that's not gonna happen. You know, we gotta listen. We gotta keep calm. And we gotta respect. And every person in this county or in this township deserves that. Every parent that has a child there needs to look at that. And our board that we have elected, we need to know that you're gonna think about what's best for us. Because I've never heard any concerns on that school until that carrot was tangled. And now that's all I'm hearing. Different types of school designs were brought in, that this county had this. Is that my bell? Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush.
Hi, Dan Ludwig, Maple Avenue, Swords Creek. Believe it or not, nothing about the mega site. I'm gonna go with some of the grade point averages in the sports and go over that type of stuff. My daughter's been involved in high school now for two years. She's been on every varsity team since she's been in ninth grade. I've talked to her coaches, and there's usually a competition between the two girls, JV varsity, and their grade point averages. They try to see who could do better, 3.6 to 3.5. I know volleyball had a really good one last year. The basketball's team just got awarded from the Flint Metro League at 3.5 academic for the girls' basketball team. I'm wondering which sports are causing the problem with the grades, because I know the girls' teams, they're all getting the hand-me-down uniforms. And I see the football field over there, so I'm thinking it could possibly be the football field, the basketball field. If these kids are getting rewarded and they're not coming to school, why don't we, if we can't raise the grade point average, make them play on that grass field where the lacrosse field used to be? Have the parents bring their lawn chairs and sit out there until they bring their grade point average up so they can play on that couple million dollar football field? You know, I'm not saying it's the football team, but I know there's five solid teams with passing, very strong passing grades. The other day I made a comment about the principal being held accountable for the schools for absence, being absent. I guess that was kind of pretty wrong. I do remember, you know, our principal coming back when I was a kid, come knocking at the door. But we do have a police officer at our school, and I know we have school choice kids, and we have our own kids. On a slow day, what about having him go door knock? He's getting paid anyways, principal don't have to leave. I know we're gonna leave our kids in jeopardy without a police officer there, but there isn't a police officer at every school anyway, so I think a police officer knocking at the door might scare the parents and the kids to come to school. These are just a couple suggestions that I thought about since I've been here. I've been guilty, I'm guilty, I've learned all this just because of this mega site and from you guys and what's going on, so appreciate it, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Anyone else? All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Steaton. I'll speak on behalf of myself. I am a township president of Monday Township, and I am a Swords Creek school taxpayer. So, I just, I'm gonna go off of a couple of things that were said. I know there is a request going out to the metro police for a second SRO officer. And hopefully that should alleviate some of the issues. I know it's your board meeting on the 24th that's scheduled for them to come in and speak about the absenteeism from the GIST. So I hope there's some help there that's going to come. I mean, at some point in time, you have to ask yourself, how do we, how do we get here? Because I'm gonna tell you, when I went to school and and me and Don went to the same school, I believe Swords Creek?
No, I went to
Up close enough. Swords Creek. So, knowing that, when I went to school here, if we didn't miss, if we missed first period, a phone call was made. It was an automatic phone call that came out from the school district. And my parents knew right then and there that I wasn't at school. If I missed any other periods during the day, they would get a phone call, and it would actually tell them what period I missed from that school day. So I don't know, is there a breakdown? Did that stop at some point? Because you just don't have the means to do it anymore? It was a computer program back in the early 80s, early 90s, so I can't imagine that you don't have that technology available to you now. And there's got to be some way. My kids went to Lake Fenton, fortunately, and they were very similar in the same situation. A phone call came out if they missed a period or were marked tardy. And we actually had to call into the school within 24 hours, the parent did, and explain why they were marked absent or they were tardy for that class. So I don't know if there's a breakdown in the system, but there's gotta be a way that you, as staff members, as board of directors, as teachers, and teachers too. All these people, you all play a part, your role. And your role is to make sure that our kids are getting educated. And that's your responsibility. So I ask you to take a look at maybe some of your own inner ways that you do things and how you, as staff members, board members, and teachers can start holding, you know, the kids, but most of all, making the parents aware, because a lot of times, parents don't know that, hey, my kids skipped third period.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We're going to move on for the business at hand tonight. This evening, we will be interviewing four superintendent search firms as our first step in searching for a permanent superintendent. Mr. Kitchin is not going anywhere. He is committed to serving as our interim superintendent this year. We're very grateful for that, and we look forward to working with Jim throughout this year. One of the most important responsibilities we have as a school board is to select and work closely with and evaluate the superintendent. And this is something that we all take very seriously. The superintendent is the chief executive officer of the district who is also empowered to act as the instructional leader and is responsible for focusing on district goals, implementation of board policies, and management of the district overall. And that's just a snapshot of what the superintendent does. Great, Jim? Tonight, we have invited four search firms who have representatives sitting with us at this moment to present their superintendent search proposals. All board members receive those proposals in advance to review prior to this meeting. Each firm will be given 30 minutes to present and answer questions from the board. And as I mentioned, we've seen those proposals already. And we look forward to hearing from you, but we also would like to have enough time to be able to ask questions. Our goal by the end of this evening tonight is to select a search firm so that we can begin moving forward in our planning stage. Are there any questions from board members? No? All right. The way this is going to work, and so we want fairness in the competition, we're going to actually draw names. And the first one will stay with us. And then we will, we will ask the others to go to our conference room, which is through the door right there. Sue, are you going to, you're going to? Right, thank you, and show them where the facilities are and everything. Okay, thank you. All right, so I've just drawn out a name. Our first presenters are HYA, and that's Scott Winch and Pamela Hornberger. So if the others of you would follow Sue. Thank you.
Are we missing a packet before we start? Were we only given three?
No, we have four.
I'm only counting three. Yeah, I've only got three. HYA, M A S B, Ray and Associates, I don't have MLI.
Yeah, you don't have MLI. Sue, oh, Sue's not there.
Sorry.
No, there should have been a presentation. She had it up, actually, when we started.
Okay. MLI is giving their proposals. They brought, they wanted to bring it in and hand it out. Yes. All right.
Are you ready?
All right. Welcome, Scott and Pamela. We appreciate you making the trip here. We look forward to learning about your proposal.
All right, well, thank you, and thanks for having us. And our third member of our team, Dr. Ritchie, is actually presenting at a conference tonight in Chicago, so he could not join us, but he wanted to let you guys know that that's where he was at, and his presentation is actually on school boards and superintendent working together, so. I'm Scott Winch, I am a senior associate with HYA. This is my fourth year of working with HYA. Pretty much my experience with them has been in Wisconsin. I'm from Wisconsin, I've 21 years as a superintendent in the state of Wisconsin. Pretty much in the small rural districts I've served my whole time. So somewhat familiar, this is very, Swords Creek is very close to what my hometown kind of reminds me of. I told Pam that when we met this afternoon. But, so that's my background a little bit. I did do two searches, which I'll get into a little bit later in the presentation in Michigan two years ago, so I do have some experience in Michigan as well, but I'm gonna let Pam introduce herself, and we'll get back to that in a minute.
Yep, I'm Pam Hornberger. I'm a former teacher, I'll start with that. I taught 23 years K-12 art. And most recently, I served in the state legislature, House Policy Chair, all that crazy stuff that happens at the state level. But more importantly for you guys, I think, coming from our team, is I'm a former school board member. So I served on the Lance Cruz Public Schools for six years. And so all of the things that you guys are thinking, all the questions that you have, I've had. I participated in three different superintendent searches during my time on the school board. Two with my school board, and then one in the district that I taught in. They asked me to participate in their superintendent search because I had some experience from the ones that we did in Lance Cruz, I served on the Lance Cruz Board. So I know the anxiety that comes along with hiring a superintendent. I know the anxiety that comes along with having to be cohesive as a board while you're doing it, and all the questions that come along with that. So I am super anxious to hopefully work with you guys and go through the rest of our proposal and answer any questions. I don't know, Scott didn't mention it, but if you have questions when we're moving along through, I would prefer that you just ask instead of wait till the end. Lends a little more conversation to the presentation. Great.
What school district, he's already made me, what school district did you guys do a search in Michigan recently?
Oxford and
Okay. Okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Oh, so I guess why Swords Creek, that's our next slide. Am I supposed to, oops? Am I doing that? Oh, he's got it, okay. Well, of course, we did our homework, just like you guys are gonna have tons of homework to do, you know, searching when we give you candidates come forward, when we're meeting with community members, but why Swords Creek? So from our perspective and from a candidate's perspective, you guys are a prime school district. You're in a great area of our state. You have wonderful community support. And while there are always a myriad of issues in any community, you have great support in that. Shows in the bonds that you have passed and the things that you're doing for students to move student learning forward. And we're excited to be able to work with Swords Creek, as I believe a superintendent would be. You guys are here because you believe education is, I'm guessing, the one thing, the quality that, the quality education that you want to provide for your students in your community, that's why you're up for school board. So we want to help you find someone that is going to build that trust relationship with you moving forward, so that you can work together as a board with a new superintendent. And I think Swords Creek, you know, surface level, when people start doing their deep dive into why they want to come here when they're looking at the application process, I think you guys are a prime district for candidates across the state and across the region, actually. When, a little bit later, when Scott goes over, we have a lot of people that apply regionally from other states. So it's a pretty exciting process to go through, if you haven't before. It is a good process to go through. Next one. Why us? So a lot of experience. Mike, who's not here tonight, just finished doing the state superintendent search for and the next state superintendent that will start at MDE in, I believe he starts October 4. So we do have Michigan experience. Scott did searches most recently in Ann Arbor and Oxford. And you guys well know the Oxford tragedy that happened. So it was a little bit of a different animal doing that superintendent search, and he can speak more to that than I can. At the state level, we had issues that we dealt with, that I was in charge of. And then searching for a new superintendent once that whole process played out. I think we bring more engagement because our associates are involved across the country at different, doing different presentations, at different events. So, and then just, I don't know if you wanna, if you wanna chime in, but just the more involvement that we have and the more people that we interact with, the better off we are finding candidates for you. We're totally into strong community engagement, so once you bring us on board, I think that's the number one thing that we need to do. Once we meet with you and establish what your goals are for the district, we need to start meeting with your community members across the board, your staff, your parents, parent engagement, student engagement. You really want to know, and you find out a lot from your high school students, what they're looking for, what they, what they need. But I think as a board member, you'll find out, once we put some profiles together, after we go out and actually meet and engage with different groups in your community, it's a little eye-opening as a board member to find some things out that you might not be aware of out in the community. So we focus a lot on community engagement, and we want to customize the search for you. And we have a commitment to stay with you through the process. If for some reason it ends up that you end up not with a superintendent at the end of the process, we're committed to staying with you until you find one. And we do give a two-year guarantee if your superintendent leaves. We will be here to do another superintendent search for you. It's rare, but it does happen. It's a, it's a pretty mobile, you know, it's a pretty mobile position right now. They have a lot of options, you guys should have a lot of options. So. Want to move on to the next slide? Sure. We, oh, go ahead.
This is just a slide that shows some of the regional searches and everything that HYA has done over the last few years, including the past Michigan searches. As I said earlier, Ann Arbor and Oxford, I was a part of those two, two years ago. And Mike also was part of the Midland, I believe it was the Midland search. So we, the two of us together have been in Michigan quite a bit, not this past year, but the year before. So we do have some experience in Michigan, but you can just see some of the searches on your slide here, of the ones that we've done in the Midwest at least. So that's just kind of the purpose there, anything to this just shows the number of search by firms in the last three years. And you can see that we've had significantly more than the others, and that doesn't take anything away from me or anything else, but we have been out, we are, as Pam said, regional, that nationwide searches. I believe we're up to about 130 associates nationwide right now. So we also build a network. I received two emails today from associates that I've never met saying, I have this job, and if we have the Swords Creek one, we'll send that email out ourselves saying, we have this job in Michigan. Here's the dynamics of the district, here's what they have. If you know of anybody that's interested, please have them contact us, or here's the link for the application. And so regionally and nationally, we put that things out, and you'll see coming up on another slide, like for Ann Arbor and Oxford, how it broke down for the number of applicants by state. And here it is. So for Ann Arbor, we had a total of 25 applicants. 19 of them were from out of state. We put candidates in three tiers. Tier ones are the ones we suggest the districts interview. And you can see Ann Arbor had 11 tier one candidates. Two were from Michigan, and then, you know, nine other states that were represented as well. Successful candidate was actually from Michigan. And then for Oxford, we had 20 total applicants, and as Pam said, that was a little bit, we were happy with the number. And it was a very touchy situation through that process. The board was very interested in traumatic sort of trauma certifications, and it thinned out their, rightfully so, but it also thinned out their candidate pool a little bit. But the tier one candidates, we had five from Michigan, one from Kentucky, one from Ohio. And they actually hired somebody from Ohio. And then just a third, Mike did a search in Littleton, Colorado, just to give you an idea where the applicant pool came from there. This is a list of conferences that Mike and I, one or the other, Mike and him, is at the one in Chicago right now. Next week, we'll be in Madison for the District Administrators Conference in Wisconsin. In November, we'll be at the Joint Annual Conference in Illinois. Wisconsin Association of School Boards, the American Association of School Administrators in February, which is in Nashville. And then the other two, Mike will be attending in March and April. So just a list of where we go, and we network at these, especially at the February 1th, the ASA, we have what they call their Job Center, and we we have a spot there, and we have people stop and talk to us about jobs that we have open and where they're maybe interested in going, and it's always a good fit for us to And, uh, where they're maybe interested in going and it, it's always a good, uh, good fit for us to, um, try to find matches there as well.
And just so you guys know when we're talking with, when we, when we go present at these conferences and we're at, when we're at these conferences, networking with people. What we would, um, put together for you would be, once we meet with you and figure out what you want. You may not want people from California. You might want something more, um, Michigan-based or regional-based and that's all would be tailored to your needs. Everything is going to be driven by what the board wants and what the board, you know, wants to look at. Um, you may have internal candidates, you may not. We, we would discuss how we would treat them. How would you, how you want an internal candidate treated? So there's a, a ton of discussions that need to take place, but the experience that we bring to it and the networking that we continue to do, you know, every year when we're not doing this. I think lends to us bringing in some, um, solid candidates for you. And then if we go to the next, if you go to the next slide, um, we are involved and committed to being involved in, um, some diverse groups that, uh, are superintendent, um, positions. So we actually, Hazard Young, last year partnered with Howard University to do, uh, a superintendent, uh, board member and central office candidates. Just because when we go out into communities, we need to be ready for whatever a school board expects of us, um, their needs. And, um, so we do, um, partner with the Latino administrators and the, um, Black School Educators Alliance.
All right, a little bit about, uh, the process then. Um, and I'll, I'll share a, um, draft of a timeline in a little bit here, um, that takes us through about two months. Um, but if we're selected, we'll, we start with our engage phase and I'll get a little more detail on that, but that would be start with a board planning. And we'd be here in person, um, to meet with the board and say, okay, what do you want from this search? Um, do you want just Michigan? Do you want us to reach out regionally, nationally? Every job that we have, every superintendent position that's open is posted on the H Y A website, whether we do the search or not. And a lot of times that's all the national reach you need is people know that those jobs are posted there. So, um, but that planning meeting, um, is just with us and the school board and whoever else you might want at that meeting. And we set out the timeline, um, and then we take it right from there and move on through the rest of the engage process. And I'll give you some examples of that. And the whole time through, the day we get the, the okay for you to post a job, so we close it. Uh, we will be recruiting candidates both in-state and regionally, nationally if need be, and, uh, that goes through the whole process. And as they apply, we start, uh, we start interviewing them. We just do a, a quick fifteen or twenty-minute, um, pre-screen. I, I call a pre-screen interview, ask them a few questions, um, and we start background checks, um, and things like that on at the same time. So when we get to the end of the process, we're ready to share that information with you guys as well.
And, and obviously the screening is based on the profile that we put together from your input and any community input. And, you know, once community input comes in, it, it, it's, the profile is going to be based on what the board is looking for. You know, you'll get the community input, we'll take a look at it, we can guide you, but really it's up to you. So we want you, when we sit down and meet with you, to already have some ideas of, you know, what do you think Schwartz Creek needs? What do you think your needs are as a board? And, um, you know, what, what should the ideal superintendent look like? You're never gonna find a perfect person, but if you guys can all come to a consensus about some of the needs. It makes it a heck of a lot easier for the superintendent coming in and for your board to work together. It's a difficult process to get through. Um, it's a trust process and so, yeah, sorry, I took it a little off course.
I, I'm gonna stop just so we can have some of our top administrators in here to help guide the board, what they want when you interview the staff.
I, I would say yes, if they're not applying.
Right, yes, okay, yeah. Right, 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 right. Or Michelle Paul's here, somebody else, yeah, but we can depend on them. Yeah, okay, I want them in there. And, and number two is, I'm gonna go quicks, I know you guys only have so much time. What's your background check consist of? Rough form, just a short answer. I mean, do, do you look at experience and go ahead?
Sure. We do an informal background check, um, we check the references, which obviously they gotta notice it, but.
Right.
We also do some things, you know, uh, social media search, Google searches. And then H Y A offers, also offers at the end, if, on your final candidate, there's an additional, uh, very thorough background check. Um, that, you know, we would possibly recommend doing especially if you're from all state, um, which is an additional charge. Uh, but, uh, so we do the initial, um, we do through.
Chating.
Chating.
You call their last three employers and say, hey, listen, how did this principal do? How did this curriculum director do? How did this athletic director do? Whatever, maybe. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions at this point or?
I see a criminal. Wonderful.
Uh, and just so you, I, I follow up to that, another part of that is, uh, that if you do the thorough check at the end, it's like twelve or thirteen hundred dollars, I think, if I keep it worn out. But that does credit history, it does very thorough, I mean, it's basically through a Department of Justice. Um, so whatever we can't get informally, we can, you know, we have the resources, uh, to get it in a formal manner too. So, all right. Okay, uh, speedy engagement. I want to get through this, um, and talk to about the board portal a little bit. So if we are selected, the first thing we will do is get a date that we can meet with you, um, in a planning meeting and get a, a timeline down. What groups you want us to meet with, um, and those kinds of things. So we have a timeline. We work backwards from when you want to announce your superintendent who's our, we work back from there. So, um, we, we can work as quickly as you want and if you want to take your time and do that. Generally, this can be about a two-month process. But, um, Mike and I did a search in Wisconsin last year in Whitewater, um, and they wanted it done before June and we started in the middle of April. So, um, we did it, um, but generally it's about a two-month process. Uh, while we get that set, we would also want to do an individual interview with every school board member. Um, and just spend fifteen or twenty minutes on Zoom or a phone call, whatever's more convenient for you folks. Um, just to get your individual thoughts on what the district needs. Um, three questions we basically ask during the conversation. What strengths, what do you think are the strengths of your district? What challenges are faced in your district? And what characteristics would you like to see in your next superintendent? And that's, like I said, generally over fifteen or twenty-minute conversations. Um, and, uh, that helps us get through the, the board interviews. And we'll also do any, any individual interviews with other administrators or any other key personnel that you think we should do individual interviews with. And then we need focus groups, um, and I'll give you some samples of focus groups on the next slide. Uh, community forums, we do those in person or on Zoom. Whatever, uh, is, sometimes those Zooms on Sunday nights are, are, uh, the best attended ones. And, you know, that's, uh, a good time for people to unwind and sometimes they like that on Sundays and sometimes they don't. But we found it to be effective on Zoom as well. Then we also had a survey that we would put together, um, an online survey that we would ask the district to distribute to, you know, through your student management system or whatever you have. Um, and, uh, we get, we get information from there. From all of that, we create a leadership profile report. And that will tell you, um, we take all the information about the strengths, the challenges and the characteristics and we put it in one report. And that will be presented to you, um, at, at the board meeting, when we set that date at the planning meeting. Um, so you can see the, all the information we gathered, how many people we talked to. And, um, and then we can present the candidates, um, based on those needs that we see in the leadership profile report. We think our research-based approach helps you best understand the desires of your district and, uh, we've had some good success.
I have a quick question, sorry. Um, okay, those surveys and all the, uh, data that you gather, do we get a copy of that or is that just presented to us?
Yeah.
When, at the time?
You'll get it.
Okay, okay.
You would want it.
Yeah.
You guys wanted it.
Right.
I mean, uh, just surface level, honest, ongoing conversations between your board and with your community are gonna give you the best outcomes.
Right.
You know, and, 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 and it may be difficult sometimes. You know, community members may not be happy, you guys may not be happy with each other, you, someone likes one person, some people like the other person. But if you're not having those conversations, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get the best outcome. So our goal is to give you as much information as possible and to work as closely with you as possible. So that you have all the information and you feel comfortable. Because this person is coming in and it's someone, I, as a board member, I know. You, you have to have a trust relationship with that person, each and every one of you. And, and sometimes those go sideways, but you, you need to work together as a group right now to find the best person to build those relationships with. And, and it's difficult being a superintendent, they, it's like jet of all trades. They have to work with other personality on the board, then all the community members, staff, parents. So it's not an easy thing to do right now and I give them a lot of pride for wanting to do it. Anyway, I'm sorry, just took you a little off track.
What, do we have the information when we, do you have information on these candidates? Like where did theirs, if they were superintendent previously, where was their school at as far as, um, GPAs and stuff like that?
Can I, can I answer that in about two minutes?
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
You share all that information.
We'll get to it.
You'll get a little bit more in-depth there. And if you still have a question, just fire away, okay? This slide just kind of shows the, uh, different way we do focus groups. It can be face-to-face, Zoom, um, if you want us in different buildings, uh, if you want us to go to the community hall. Um, and then email feedback, we always tell people, if, if you're not comfortable saying something in front of a group and you want to come and, here's my, you know, I'm gonna give you guys all a card tonight, but I'll have cards with me, um, at the focus groups. Email me your thoughts too, you know, so. Through this process, it'll be people's choice not to participate. We, we will contact or reach out to whoever you guys want. Some different groups that we have seen, high school students, parents, certified staff, support staff, administrators, business groups, your chamber members, uh, civic groups, your booster clubs or P T Os, and anything else that you think is specific to Schwartz Creek that might be viable, um, you can do that. Meeting times, morning, afternoon, weekend, generally the, the staff and students and everything. Um, we, obviously we want during the week, um, but we do a lot of Zooms on weekends and things like that to, to accommodate people.
And I'm only on my way, you know, I'm not the first.
So, uh, the one thing I have high school students bolded up there and that's basically, we, we, we highly recommend that we talk to high school students. Um, and I think you, it, it's always interesting to see their feedback on the status of your school district. I, I, I always appreciate seeing it. It's one of, it's one of my favorite groups to be with, actually. Um, this is just a sample of a day in the district. Uh, that would be kind of, when we get down to your final two or in Milwaukee's case, three candidates. Um, we create a feedback forum, um, so that when they, when people are meeting, they can provide instant feedback to you folks as board members. Um, so you can see what everybody thinks the final is as they meet with them during the day of the district. And again, it's, it's instant and, uh, so you can, you get a good idea of what everybody thinks about the finals. Board portal. So this is a, just a screenshot of our Ann Arbor board portal. Uh, it's password protected, so the school board can decide who they want to have access to this information. If it's the seven board members, the executive assistant, maybe a couple other administrators. Uh, so those are, nobody else would have access to the information. And this is where you will see every application. So you will see if Scott Lynch applies for your job, you're gonna see my resume, you're gonna see my letters of recommendation. You're gonna see the districts I work at, you're gonna see all of that stuff. We, we don't just put the tier one candidates in there. Everybody that applies for this job, we will, you'll see their application. And then at the end of the process, we will, we will give you tier one, tier two, tier three breakdown of the candidates. So, does that answer what you were asking?
Yeah, pretty much. And it, it, like the, when he, the last slide, when we talked about, you know, when the candidates come to the district and they're meeting with different focus groups. And they're doing, um, and you're getting feedback, that's gonna go right into the portal too. So you'll be able to see the feedback on your final two or three or whoever they are immediately. So, uh, quite honestly, I wish we would have had that when we did the stage life to do a search. Because it would be nice to see all of that information immediately instead of, it, it, it's hard to have it filtered through someone else. So I'm just trying to just make sure that access to the board portal are counted.
Sorry, I'm asking because, uh, we have to keep the applicants confidential.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
So at what point do we have access to that information?
When we sign the contract with you, you will have a board portal set up and ready to go.
But it will still be up to each individual board member to keep that information confidential because they're applicants who are currently working somewhere else.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and you will, we, we can go over that at our, at our first meeting, but yes, definitely. And there are applicants that'll, that will, um.
They'll, they'll ask when they need to. They'll, they'll want to know before they apply, they'll ask when they need to. Yes.
They may not be your top candidates. They may not want their name out there. They might not want their board to know that they're searching for something else. So, yeah, it, it's, it's a, it's a tight rope because you get all the information, but also you need to keep it confidential.
And we go through the confidentiality plan. So this is just the six areas that we break down, the portal links, the home, kind of puts our stuff out there. The board updates, we try and do at least a weekly update of where we're at with the searches and where we're going with things. Zoom links, we use one Zoom link basically for all of our Zoom meetings for one district. Um, the planning, the summary of the planning meeting notes will be in there. Um, the propose, you'll see the R F P that we did, the proposal, this presentation and the signed letter of agreement. The engage phase has some specific things to it. The recruit phase, um, like the, where the job's posted and everything. The select phase, uh, is the interview schedule, the day in the district schedule, interview questions, day of the district. Uh, and then the transition services, um, that are available, which I'm gonna mention here right at the end. Um, which we just added something new and that, that's probably not in your PDF if you're looking at a paper copy. Cause they just added it, uh, uh, about two days ago. So this is just a draft timeline that we put together. Again, if we're selected, we would meet with you and we would go through and put specific dates on these and get moving on your search. So, uh, like you said, you know, if you say you want to burn the fire before Christmas, then, um, uh, we adjust accordingly. We work back from the date you want to announce your superintendent. But that was just late December.
Is this one of those?
It's coming, yeah.
Okay.
This is the new thing that, and Pam's gonna hand you out a piece of paper that H Y A just added. Um, they're starting a transition academy, um, which is offered at forty-five hundred dollars, uh, for new, for school boards and new hires. Um, but if H Y A does a search and places a superintendent, that is a free add-on for your district. So, um, as I said, they just added it within the last week. Um, again, produces the four essential deliverables to be used on the school board, a hundred-day plan, uh, key, key performance indicators. Uh, evaluation, evaluation process and instrument if you so desire, and a strategic plan assessment. So, um, I think that can be a valuable resource for any new superintendent, um, as well as a leadership profile report. But this is a nice add-on that H Y A just did. Uh, I believe that's just some recommendations, uh, or writers of reference that we've received over the last few years. And I think we have a few minutes left for questions.
Yeah, I think this is nice because it gives a new superintendent some support that they might need. Um, you know, as far as looking at a hundred-day plan and, and other things that are listed on here. It's ongoing. It's a chance to network with other new superintendents and with some of our people. So that they can fall back if they have questions, um, or concerns, or they run into a situation where they need a mentor. Um, quite honestly, it, I, I think it keeps us from having to come back two years later to do another superintendent search. We want to cover all the bases. We want that person to feel supported and we want you guys to feel like a cohesive group, um, and that there's, you know, a trust relationship there. Anyone have any questions?
You guys, uh, keep track of like the turnover, like, um, like, you know, uh, just example, Oxford, do you know how long he stays or she stays there and?
By fourth year, uh, working with H Y A, I think it's, Mike's going into his seventh year. Anybody that Mike has placed is still in the position that we hired. Uh, to my knowledge, it's like June or what, you know, and anybody that I've placed is still in the position, uh, that we did. So we do keep track of that.
Hmm.
We've had pretty good success. Uh, again, most of mine's in Wisconsin, but, uh, yeah, so we, we do keep track of that.
Okay.
I see you guys did Novi.
Yes.
You guys hired Ben. Right here. Remember that about four years ago?
That was prior to you being with H Y A.
No, I don't think I remember.
Okay.
Was?
He was the superintendent here in Novi.
Who was the superintendent from Burnham? Did he go to Novi?
No, it was the superintendent from Schwartz Creek that went to Novi. He went in twenty-two.
That outlaw, that outlaw.
I just wondered because it's it's said on your search there that you guys didn't know.
Yeah, yeah. That I just asked just to bring up another point. If we place somebody here, we won't recruit them for another job for five years, so.
We're not gonna steal you some.
Thank you.
To your side.
That was after.
That was after she.
After.
Thank you.
All right, so you did include in your proposal your um pricing structure.
Yes.
Um is there any any changes? I I don't necessarily want to divulge your pricing structure.
Nope.
Because we're actually being recorded.
Yep.
But any changes since then? Okay.
The only reason to get the free transitions for the forty five hundred for which is a nice little.
Actually, very nice. Okay, any questions? The board? And I and I see that we've allowed uh we've allowed these folks, not their fault, to go over by uh four minutes, so.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's not your fault. I think you you answered our questions patiently, so thank you. This is kind of a learning situation.
It is, it is, but it's good.
Thank you very much.
It causes you to work together.
And next up. Okay. Bob, that Sue Sue put that together in case somebody wanted to keep track. She just she just get it together. I'm sorry, um M A S B. Yes. Sorry, M A S B.
I heard.
Hello, this is Casey Kefkin.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here. Casey, we're we're going to give you an extra four minutes because we did the same for the folks before you.
All right, well. Hopefully I have a good chat, plenty of time to get into the questions.
All right, so my name's Casey Kefkin, as you as you know. I'll tell you a little bit about me briefly, um then I'll go through the packet I I gave to you. Um and then we'll go through the slide deck. Anytime that you all have questions though, feel free to just let me know and we can we can pause and do that. Um so my name's Casey Kefkin, I'm uh by training an attorney. Um I've been working with the Michigan Association of School Boards for about eleven years now. Um I love my work, I do a variety of things with school boards, including um so that traditional sort of attorney role. Uh trying to keep school board members and superintendents out of legal trouble by knowing ahead of time what their obligations are. Um but more recently, I've also taken on a few additional hats, including superintendent search, strategic planning. And of course, the ever-present uh P D opportunities that M A S B provides. Um my background beyond M A S B includes the Middle Cities Education Association, which is now called the um Michigan Alliance for Student Opportunity. Um I also did some time working uh in the legislature way back when. So that's a little bit of a a slice of the perspective I bring professionally. I also have two F T Es at home, I'm doing my part, a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old. So um I want to direct you though to the packet that I gave to you. I've got the slide deck in case that's helpful for your reference. I also have uh some snippets of feedback that folks have given me over the last few years that hope may be uh helpful for you to know. The third item in your packet looks like this. Uh I took the liberty of taking a look at uh perhaps some suggested salary uh comps, comparisons. With potential other similarly situated school districts. Of course, when we get down to the the nuts and bolts of it and continue to work together, we could uh pull different ones. But this is the kind of information that I would empower you with in order to make some good decisions about your next steps. And then last but certainly not least, I wanted to provide you a sample of our um survey that we use with communities. So that you would know um what we would, the tool that we use to uh get a sense of what priorities are most important to your community. Uh in your next superintendent. All right, again, if any questions come to mind, you just let me know. My clicker, there it is, is working, great. All right, so I I would imagine that most of you are familiar with M A S B. You're we're your friendly neighborhood association, so to speak. We serve school boards exclusively, of course. We've done hundreds of searches all around the state. I personally have worked with uh geez, just about every school district in some capacity uh in my eleven years or so. Uh from the U P all the way down to the southern border and back and forth. Um we also though engage with uh our national partners in order to make sure that when we come to a search situation like this one. Uh you have the opportunity to um get some candidates and get a look at um some in uh some national candidates, if that's something that you're interested in. Um one of the things that's really important to us is transparency uh and community engagement and weaving that into the process. At every stage of your uh search, and we'll talk about that a little more. But that's uh something that you'll see as a highlight with our uh process here. As you know, we're beholden only to you, we work for the boards, uh and we're really focused on empowering your community and you to make a great choice. For an ex superintendent, finding that great match for you and your community. We have no obligation to place a candidate, so if you at some point in the process decide, you know what? The slate of folks that we're seeing in terms of uh applicants uh just isn't feeling right to us, that's okay. We can push the pause button, potentially wait a few months and see, okay, you know, if we if we make some changes and maybe give it a little more time as a for instance. Maybe we'll get a a a pool that fits you better, right? So it's it's low pressure, we want to make sure that the most important thing is that you and your community get uh the best person for the position and for your community. All right, and we were of course always as as a lawyer, I'm always mindful about what the law says, right? So um I I always have uh the Open Meetings Act in mind, I want to make sure that you all have your all your i's dotted, your t's crossed. And you can be confident that you're following law the law every step of the way. All right. So we we have some assurances that we make to you when we work with you on your superintendent search. We check out your candidates, all the candidates backgrounds, we do thorough background checks on all of them, down to um you know, having a firm. Uh go through um C V's and resumes and making sure that those um uh things that those folks put in their resumes are true and accurate. Um we also make sure that we're having robust communication with stakeholders, so there are no surprises there, and they know how the process is supposed to work. Um and as alluded to earlier, we make sure that we've got a good candidate pool that you feel good about before going on to the next step. And it if we don't feel good about it, we can pause and and start that process over if we need to. Uh if we have a situation where uh you select someone and that person leaves within a year, we'll come back and do the search again for free. Okay, so we want to make sure you've got a good, the best person uh that we can have you um have have here for you. All right. As I think the 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 board president said earlier, right? The most important job arguably uh could be that that you all have is to select a superintendent and to evaluate and guide that person. So we want to make sure that you are empowered to make a great decision for yourselves and for the community, for the students of this district to do that. Uh so we will go through that process about how we're gonna do that. All right, so typically we take about three months. Um that's, you know, it'll depend on schedules, but that's the typical schedule for a superintendent search. This is sort of an infographic of that. Uh let me tell you about what we typically do in each stage of the game, each stage of the process. All right, so in preparation, what I would do probably ideally next week, come back and meet with you, we'll have our calendars available. And we'll set out a timeline for um how we can um both engage with the community and make sure that we've got. Uh good, robust community engagement, uh that feedback back to you. Um and then start the process of trying to uh of recruiting a great candidate. Um so we'll also, as I, we sort of got a maybe a head start a little bit, looking at that salary compensation uh comparison document. So that as a combined, you know, identifying some priorities that that you see as uh needing you. Things that you want to see in your next superintendent along with that uh salary document. We come up with a preliminary posting that we can let people know across the state, hey, if you're looking for a superintendent position, if you're ready to make that step. Uh you know, take a look at Schwartz Creek, we think this could be a great place for you to find a home. All right, we can do a variety of things to publicize that uh opening, including a digital brochure. Uh we can talk about the details of that a little later. I want to tell you a little bit more about stakeholder engagement. Uh you'll see that first top item and you've got the the copy of our um our sample online survey. That's particularly powerful uh and helpful. Um we also have uh face-to-face groups as well, so I typically will go out and meet with uh for sure the staff. The administrators, um as well as we usually do evening sessions with family, community. I typically also add on to that um Zoom sessions, both for staff and for community and family who couldn't make the in-person meeting. Um we do a combination of things where we both talk to folks about what the process is going to be like, take questions and take their input. Um I'll say that, yeah, go ahead.
Go quick.
Yep.
How do you make your decision on what staff and administrator you want to pick?
Everybody can come. They decide. So we post the post the meeting time and folks come.
Not really interview, you're allowed one day to ask a question.
Uh they no, so I will spend about fifteen minutes or so going over the process with them, and then they can uh come and come forward and and talk. And I have my laptop open and I take notes. And I will stay as long as they'd like. Does that make sense? Goodness. All right, what can I help you with?
You may not necessarily get people that are comfortable because you know.
Sure.
May not be available.
Hmm.
So like. Be interesting if you randomly pick people on our staff and and call them and.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't I didn't ask the last gentleman that question, but. It's a board meeting, right? We have twenty people here.
Hmm.
Thousands of people on our school just. So if you randomly pick who decides to come, who's available, you may be not getting a good look.
Sure, I I wouldn't want to restrict uh the input that you consider just to the face-to-face groups for sure, right? Because there aren't, that that's there's a limited number of folks can be able to come to a uh a particular meeting, right? That's why we have the online survey. Um that typically in a district this size, I I would say I'd be reasonably happy with about three hundred fifty responses. I'd be ecstatic with more and I'll work with your staff to push that out and ask you also to um. Make sure that you're engaging with your network of folks in the community. Hey, make sure you fill out the online survey so that we can have your voice be heard as well. Um because you're right, you know, for us to maybe, you know, forget five hundred people uh in the in the conversation, that would be really difficult in the face-to-face scenario, right? Um that's why we've got the online survey and I'll partner with with you and uh the rest of your community to get as many folks participating in that as possible. I'm sorry, say again?
I said, or you give the people that the staff questions to answer.
Well, you know, I I'm coming in and and helping and assisting your community in in the best way that I can. Um and I want to hear all the voices, truly, because we want to make sure that the best uh match is is possible. Well, that that could be, we we can talk about that some more. All right, so once we have uh the engagement with our uh online survey, our face-to-face focus groups. I come back with you all and we go through that that feedback. It's upon that foundation that you will do a couple, do many things. Um but our next step there is to identify those priorities that you find most important uh in terms of characteristics for your next superintendent. Let me give you an example. So in some communities, uh you know, having a PhD is going to be a characteristic that might be particularly important. Say, you know, if you're from Ann Arbor or something, you've got a big uh ten university in town, right? That might be important to that community to have a PhD level candidate for their superintendent. And a lot of other communities, not so much. They want to make sure, hey, they've got the uh the certifications required for a superintendent for an administrator, but we, you know, are gonna prioritize other things. Like for instance, classroom experience or building level management, right? So those are the kinds of things that we want to engage with the community to get their perspectives on, and that will help you uh understand, okay, where are those priorities? That we need to reflect our decisions with. All right, some other ways that we're gonna use that that engagement and then get and and utilize that engagement. Um we're gonna have feedback forms uh at each stage of the game. So for instance, when we've got uh our first round interviews, we'll talk more about the process for that in a minute. Um we'll have the opportunity for the folks uh who are coming to the interviews, fill out forms. Uh talking about how the things that they did like about the candidate, things they did not like so much about that candidate. And you'll have the opportunity to read those things, uh all of those forms before you make any decisions. We'll also have those available for our final round interviews. And we'll have the opportunity for for second round interviews, for the final round when you've got two candidates left. The opportunity for the audience, uh the public to suggest questions for you to ask of that person. All right, so at every opportunity, we we really try to do our best to find ways to um make sure that we've got the the public, your community. Engaged in the process and supporting you in this team effort. All right, so after we've uh done that first uh meeting and and gotten to know each other, set the. Uh set the expectations in terms of the schedule and things like that, we'll come back together and we have what we call a recruitment meeting. Now this is when we'll be able to take a look at uh the results of that um uh that survey and that input sessions that we had face-to-face. We'll develop uh those more specific uh criteria that you all are looking for in your next superintendent. We'll put that selection criteria out um on the on the recruiting website so that folks know, okay. I was thinking about, you know, applying to Schwartz Creek, and now that I look at the selection criteria, I feel like I'm a really great candidate. Or maybe they say, no, I guess, I guess it's not really, you know, I'm not a very good match, and so perhaps they won't they won't apply. So it helps uh both recruit folks who may not have um been interested before to think like, okay, yeah, I think I really have a good shot at it. Or perhaps um they they say that, nah, that it maybe isn't isn't my uh my best match. So we're just trying to get that that good match. All right, additionally, as we go through, when we start collecting those uh application materials, I will begin to go through with them and I'll I'll make, you know. Uh inquiries and say, okay, you know, especially if they're they're new applicants that we haven't seen sort of in the M A S B team before, I'll give those folks a call. And start vetting them and making sure that they're they're good people. We'll also, you know, do some some networking with other search search uh consultants, and if they've seen those folks interview, if they've had relationships with those folks. Um we can we can uh develop those sort of questions. All right, so at that, okay, yeah, yeah.
Do you have access to to um candidates from other states?
Yes. Yep, yep, so typically, uh in a in a district of this size, we'll get a few. Um it's up to you whether that's. It's up to you whether that's, you know, a priority for you or not, but if we get most, for districts of this size, it's folks who often have maybe family or roots here in Michigan who either want to come back home, or, you know, maybe parents are in need of, or some more connections, things like that. That's the most typical sort of out-of-state candidate that I see get serious looks. All right. So once we've collected all those materials from our applicants, what we'll do as a team is that you will go through those materials. Again, we'll use the selection criteria that you developed, rooted in the feedback that you got from your stakeholders, and we'll sort of use that as a lens or a rubric to help us decide, okay, who best fits, given the materials that are in front of us, who best fits our community and our community's priorities. I can, I will help you with that process as we go along, but ultimately, it is your decision, right? It's your role to decide who are the best candidates to interview, but we're going to have that conversation in the open, transparent process. We discuss those candidates by number instead of by name at this stage, before they accept a first-round interview. That does a couple things, and the most important thing is that it ensures that you have the highest-quality candidates applying for this position, right? So we want to make sure that folks have confidence that they're not going to damage a relationship with a current employer, that they can go ahead and put their name in front of you all for consideration, and that you will keep that identity confidential, and only once you invite them for a first-round interview will we publicly announce that name. So that makes sure that you've got great candidates willing to sort of stick their neck out a little bit and put their name in front of you as consideration. But I'll lead you through that process so that we can balance those two interests, and making sure that we've got high levels of transparency, and the public can see how you're making the decision, but also that we are protecting the identity of those initial applicants, so that they have confidence in actually applying. All right? Any questions about that? Okay. We'll conduct those first-round interviews. Again, when we develop the questions for those first-round interviews, they'll be rooted, the questions will be rooted in that document that we developed along with our community, those priorities that mattered to them the most. So when I come to you with suggested questions, I'm going to be working from those, that priority, that selection criteria document, okay? Those first-round interviews are all scripted, everybody gets the same questions. Typically, we have five to six interviewees that we'll talk to on that evening, and they all, we make it, try to make it as apples-to-apples as we can for that first round. The second round, however, once you've narrowed your decision down to two, which we will also do in an open meeting, once we've narrowed down to two, at that point, it'll be a more free-flowing conversation between you and the potential superintendent. We'll have some scripted questions, but we'll also have questions that will come from you that are simply follow-up questions that present themselves sort of on the fly. We also have the opportunity for our audience to submit suggested questions as well, so a really solid vetting of your last two, before you come down to a decision between those last two folks that you really feel confident in. Once you've done that process, you've had that conversation, that deliberation, again in the public, then we'll have a motion for you to begin negotiations, to negotiate a superintendent contract with the candidate that you all have consensus around. Typically, what happens then is two board members, you know, after that evening, everybody goes home, you'll schedule a meeting with that superintendent to negotiate the details of a contract, okay? And then, following that, once you've got those details of that proposed contract, the board will formally adopt a contract with your superintendent candidate. All right. Our ongoing support includes a transition workshop, which is free of charge, to make sure everybody knows roles and responsibilities and things like that, as well as we have some mentorship through our area representative program, and we have some price breaks and deals for you on facilitated evaluation, if that's of value to you. All right. What questions do you have for me?
Any questions for Casey?
Don't let me off too late. I know, I know you, everybody else needs to, you know, put my feet to the fire a little bit.
Well, I guess I could ask you the same question. You have access to prior places where these superintendents might have been employed to check their, that school district's GPA and things like that.
The, check the?
The GPA, like the average maybe of where they were employed at before?
We could talk about that, sure. If it's publicly available information, that would be the, maybe the trick, but yeah, if there are particular questions about, say, the academic performance of students in the previous districts, yeah, we can dig into that, sure.
Okay. That's a better way to say it, the academic achievements of the previous district, yeah.
Would you say, I mean, or is that just an unusual question that Ms. Winter's posed?
I haven't heard that question before. You know what, I always enjoy having new questions, that's great. I think typically-
Think that would be almost standard.
Okay. If you want to come to our next MASB conference and tell your other board members what they ought to be asking their folks, come on down. I would say more typically, my board members that I've worked with will, you know, based on the reputation, like, we all have a set of perceptions, and, you know, we look at my school data, not just of ourselves, but also of our neighbors, right? We like to compare and compete with one another, and so they'll take a look at my school data on their own and check out those stories. So it tends to come up that way, I think, and they tend to dig in that way. That's how I think it typically happens. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I just, I thought that would be high on the list of what their, you know, past performance was, or academics for that particular district that they may have worked at. How many districts have you done in the last six months, or eight months, or year? I know there's a cycle, but how many would you say? I didn't see that.
Sure. So MASB will have multiple going at once. I have one search at a time. I have occasionally done two that sort of didn't quite overlap, and that was manageable, but I want to make sure that we don't have schedule conflicts, so it's no fun for anyone if I have more than one at a time. So I typically do one every spring. A fall is less common, as you can imagine, but yeah, and sometimes I'll have two in the spring, but I try not to have them totally overlap and have them be separated by a little bit, so that we're not trying to keep compete for dates. MASB, however, as you can imagine, will have, especially in the spring, sometimes, gosh, we've had 15 at a time.
Thank you.
I have one. The turnover, or how long do these candidates stay there, and do you do like follow-up surveys with the community to ensure that you did get a good fit?
Sure. So as, the typical longevity of a superintendent in Michigan, and this has been like this for decades, is, how many years? Three. Oh, five would be fabulous. I would love five. No, it's three. It's three, that's typical, okay? So, you know, we love when we can make a better match, and it's more than three, but life happens, right? On both sides of the coin. Now, as we said before, though, if, God forbid, something terrible happens and it doesn't work out within a year, we come back for free, and we figure out it again, and we do our best.
I guess that's what I meant. How common is that?
It's really, it's not common. I want to say, you know, just in the, don't quote me, so to speak, in terms of, and if you want the specific number, I can go back to the ranch and email it to you. I can think of one example off the top of my head in the last three years where that happened, and we had to do it, but it's certainly not typical. Thank goodness. Knock on wood.
So Casey, I won't ask you to divulge your pricing structure.
Sure.
We all have that, but has it changed since we were provided that information? And do background checks, are those included in the base fee?
All right. Sure, so the, yeah, 75, I'm sorry, 79, and some change, that's the same, so that, yeah, we definitely didn't increase that in the last week or so.
Okay.
That's definitely the same. And yes, background checks are completely included in that fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how many would you say of your clients take advantage of the candidate disc assessment or the superintendent assessment that you offer per candidate?
I'd say maybe 10%. It's not typical.
All right. And then, advertising is not included in the base fee?
So, right, so that's additional advertising. Our standard way that we get the word out that folks are looking is through our Ravela system, and that's, you know, the way that if you're a person who's looking for a job, superintendent job in the state of Michigan, you're already plugged into that system. It's then populated through MASA, so that's really, it's the most effective and simplest way to publicize that. If you're looking, however, for a candidate outside the state of Michigan, that's where we need to go beyond that and plug into other networks to make sure we get the word out that you're looking for somebody with a more national reach. That said, though, as I said before, when we have folks who are maybe from Michigan, and they went somewhere else for a while, and they're going to come back, they're in that Ravela system as well, because they're looking to come back home, so to speak. So we do still, even without that extra push to the national, we still will get some folks from out-of-state applying for Michigan positions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Casey? No? Well, thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much.
All right. I look forward to hearing from you, and best of luck, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Who do we have now? We have Ray and Associate. Thank you, Casey. Safe travels home.
Absolutely.
If you'd like to introduce yourself to the group?
Sure. Yes, happy to do that. Is there a trick? All right. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is David Faltis, you see my photo there. First of all, thank you for serving on the board. I know sometimes it's a thankless job, and Jim, congratulations, or condolences, however that works out. When I walked in, I'll say a little more about myself, but I was a superintendent in District Carroll ISD outside of Dallas, Texas, for about 18 years, or 15 years, and we were South Lake Carroll Dragons, so we were SC Dragons. When I walked in, I saw somebody's logo, I was like, oh, wait a minute. So it was kind of cool, I kind of enjoyed that. And so, as I mentioned, I was a superintendent there for 15 years, another rural district for about three years prior to that. Retired in December of '20, after we got kids back to school. If you remember, you know, I was actually told the board I'd retire when we came back from spring break of '20, and we never came back, and so we got school up and running and that sort of thing, and had actually met Ray and Associates through an interview process in Bloomfield Hills. My wife is from Al Gray, we're here really for the week. She's the better athlete of the family, she's getting inducted into their Hall of Fame, their high school Hall of Fame, so we're heading up there tomorrow. But so we'd actually looked at moving to this area, and so as I mentioned, that's kind of how I ran into Ray and Associates, and really fell in love with their processes and some of the things that we do. I've been a managing director with them now for going on five years. I've helped with searches, most recent was in Bay City, we've done Kalamazoo, Northville, there's a couple others that are mentioned in the proposal. As I said before, my wife being from here, any opportunity I get to help with a search in this area, we run here. My brother-in-law's in the, is a state representative in the House, represents, I guess, 99th District out of Al Gray, so that's the way of family, we enjoy coming up here. There's a video, Ms. Sheila Ailes will actually be your lead person, she lives in Michigander, and I don't know if you click on that, or I, we did, she's put together just a real quick hello, so I'll let her introduce herself, if that works.
Good evening, Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education. I'm Sheila Alice, I live in Northville, and I am your Michigan connection, and I will take the lead on the superintendent search when you select Ray and Associates to assist you with your search for a new superintendent, along with my two colleagues, David Faltis and Kathy Schoenfelder. As a regional associate, I bring to this work a professional career that spans 47 years in public education. I have a unique career that includes leadership roles and administrative positions at both the local school district level and at the state level. More details about my career are listed on my resume, which is included in the proposal that you received from us. I appreciate the opportunity to share this video with you, so that you are able to put a face with my name. My superintendent search experiences in Michigan include the work that I have done with school boards in the Kalamazoo Public Schools, the Rochester Community Schools, and the Bay City Public Schools. At the conclusion of these searches, each school board selected an outstanding and successful candidate to lead its school district. Selecting a new superintendent is the most important thing that you do as a school board member. Myself, along with my two colleagues, David and Kathy, will lead you through a seamless, transparent, and proven process that is tailored to meet your individual needs and results in the slate of the very best candidates for your consideration. And now my team member, David, will lead you through our presentation and respond to you.
I feel like saying, thank you, Sheila. And then the other name that was on with us is Kathy Schoenfelder. We are unique in that we have full-time office staff in our Iowa office. Kathy is in that office, and I would just say she's phenomenal. She has 30 years of paralegal experience. She's one of those, if you needed something from us, you can contact her, and it wouldn't matter if it's midnight or 6:00 AM, she's going to get it to you. She's just phenomenal. And so this will make up our team, that will be working closely with the district, and as I said before, I do jump at the chance in any opportunity I get to come to Michigan, so, and my wife's usually excited about that as well. We won't talk about you as much, because you know who you are. I just know we drove around town a little bit, took a look at some of your facilities, the ball fields are looking great, I know you've got some great things going on. I wanted to watch the football game, I did coach back in my days, and so I kind of wanted to hang out there a little bit, and my wife is ready to go check into the hotel. But we've enjoyed getting to know a little bit more about your district, and we'll love to work with you. We'll talk a little bit about who we are. Again, you've got a proposal, so I'd rather save as much time as we can for Q and A, but we are one of the oldest search firms in the country. We've done over 1,600 searches, been in business over 50 years, and I think our process has only gotten better and better and better over the years. As I mentioned before, when I went through the process as a candidate, I just fell in love with how, A, they treated candidates, B, how they respected the school system, because we understand if you select us, we represent you, and everything that goes on with the search, and we take that very, very seriously. Having sat in superintendent kitchen seat and having worked with boards for several years, we understand how important that is for you. I would also say you're interviewing some fantastic people here this evening, you know, who all kind of know what they're doing, and so sometimes it just comes down to the fit, you know, who you see working with you. We do have associates all over the country. One of the first things that we would do if we were named would be to let our associate pool know, because they kind of have a pretty good feel for who in their region or area is either, A, really, really good, or B, looking, or C, would be a good fit for your district. I would say that the best candidates are those that aren't looking, if you will. I mean, you want somebody that's doing a great job where they are, who's very satisfied where they are, the board loves them, the community loves them, and hopefully we can knock on their door and say, take a look at Schwartz Creek, and kind of gain their attention. One of the first things we would do if selected, and there's a sample timeline, I think it's on about page 15 of the proposal, that says that, you know, if we were selected within the next two weeks, we would start to communicate with each of you individually, we're going to, you know, this is your search. We kind of know how to run searches, but we also know, you know your community, you know how things work during Thanksgiving, and all, you just know how your community flows. Every community has a slightly different bio rhythm, I like to say. But we would start out by interviewing each of you individually, to ask you kind of what your hopes and dreams and wishes and desires, and worst-case scenario, best-case scenario. and worst-case scenario, best-case scenario would be. Uh, we would help, uh, starting out with you to develop this profile of an ideal candidate. We think that's the, we'll use that profile to filter candidates. People will send us all the information that you can ever imagine. And if we have a good profile in place of what you're looking for and what your community thinks will best fit their community, that will help us filter those applicants as we go through. Uh, those one-on-one interviews, I think are really, really important because that's just an opportunity for you to give us feedback. Because sometime, even if I asked you now, you all may not say everything that you're thinking. But on those one-on-one interviews, we find that that's an opportunity for you to share with us. From there, we take the, kind of the same general set of questions and we take those out to your community. Uh, and we hold as many stakeholder meetings as you think, you know, you see fit. Uh, I've done as many as thirty-five in districts and I've done as many as, or as few as three or four. You know who your stakeholders are, you know who you need to hear from and who we need to be communicating with. And now we can do those either in person or virtual. You know, again, Sheila, I don't know if she said she had a prior commitment tonight and couldn't be here, but Sheila will help with those. If there's a need, I'll be here to help with those. Uh, and then one thing that we do is this thirty-one qualities assessment. And that's just some research-based leadership qualities that we're going to send out to anybody and everybody you want to get feedback from, to where they're going to rank kind of what they're looking for in their next school leader, kind of their top ten qualities, if you will. And then we share those with you and we'll show you, here's what the board thinks, here's what your high school students think, here's what your staff thinks, here's what your elected official think. And a lot of times there's some aha moments in there that are kind of fun. Uh, and then we go through those and you would select, here's the, the top qualities that we're looking for in our next leader. And then we use that through the entire process as we filter through, you know, resumes and documents that they may provide for us. And as I mentioned before, we do, uh, have associates around the country. We'll advertise through your state, uh, your typical state associations. I'm sure the district has memberships with certain associations that allow you to post. Uh, and then we'll talk to you about different advertising venues that we think are valuable. Some of those may be included or may be free, but then there's some of them and that may come as a cost, like Edweek comes as a, as a cost. But we think that's a really well-read, uh, publication that superintendents around the country are looking at. Um, and obviously advertising on our website, we'll talk a little bit about, you know, we have, uh, tens of thousands of people come to our website every month, which is fascinating to me. Uh, but that's the kind of traffic that we mark on our website. Uh, and then those associates will help us connect with superintendents around, uh, the area and region. And as we develop that candidate pool, whether we get thirty applicants, forty applicants, fifty applicants, whatever that works out to be, um, we're going to use that fil- that, uh, profile that we developed to kind of help filter those candidates down. And, and you may say, "David, I want to see all fifty applicants." That's fine. We'll, you know, we can provide access for you to review those. Uh, but we're going to do kind of the legwork of filtering those down to ten or twelve that we think meet the profile, maybe the experience that you're looking for, doctorate, no doctorate, uh, different kinds of backgrounds. And we'll bring those to you and then we'll help you, uh, to kind of narrow those down to a group you want to, uh, would want to interview. The one thing that I, I really liked that we do, it's kind of the, I don't want to say it's a secret sauce, but it's kind of a fun little tool that we use, a consensus-building matrix. Because sometimes if I throw twelve names in front of you with seven different opinions, we may never get down to five or six people to choose to interview, right? It's, it's just tough. But this decision-making matrix is something that we walk you through that really helps, uh, helps you reach consensus, for lack of a better way to say it. Uh, it, it's, and I'll tell you, every time I've done it, the first five or ten minutes of it, I'm kind of going, "Wait, where are we going with this?" And all of a sudden there's an aha moment where it's like, "Okay, I get it." And it really helps you get down to those people that meet the filter that you've set in place. Uh, and then we do background checks, check their social media and that sort of thing. There, as school people say, there's no surprises in the school business. If they've been in a leadership role the last five or six years, particularly post-COVID, there's going to be a headline out there. There's going to be a news article. There's going to be a, uh, social media post. Uh, and we'll share all those with you. And there may be some of them, you'll kind of say, "That, that won't work here." We take those out of the stack. But there may be some that there's a post like, "Yeah, we dealt with that too. We get it." Uh, and you, and you may want to continue visiting with that person, but we're not going to hide any applicants from you. And then when we get down to the final applicants, we dive in on a deeper criminal history background check, check credit history, um, you know, maiden names, different address, all the kinds of things that we think would be important to share with you uh, before you name someone. And then there's a headline after the fact, "Oh, wait, did you know this?" We'll do everything we can to provide that information for you, uh, ahead of time. Uh, and this is kind of what we talked about a little bit in a nutshell. We'll also help you select in those semifinalists and finalists. We'll help you with determining what kind of questions you want to ask. And we kind of have a bank of questions that we can share with you and we can tailor them to your needs. But we'll try to just provide some things that'll make it a little easier for you. I know this is in your full-time job, uh, but this is probably the most important thing you're going to do for a while, you know, is hiring your next school leader. And so we'll do everything we can to help you with that. And then just in general, this is kind of our process overview that I, that I've talked about before, the, the important things that I mentioned here are, um, not just that we're the, one of the longest-standing firms out there, but because of that, we've learned from wins and losses. We've learned from mistakes. We've learned from, from some things that we've done really, really well. You can see that educational leadership outreach, uh, that number, that's from last summer. It was about twenty-eight thousand unique visits to our website every month. I can't guarantee everyone of those is a superintendent. But I, again, I'm just amazed at the traffic that we get to our website. Um, we do, and it's mentioned in here, we have longstanding relationships with state associations. I think we've done your state association search twice, not the most recent one. Um, Sheila was the interim, I think, state superintendent for a while, was a deputy superintendent to the superintendent. So we have those relationships. Uh, so we have, I feel like we have great local ties and relationships, if you will, but we also have a national net, if you will, that we can cast, uh, to bring you the best candidates possible. That's about as quickly as I can go through that. Uh, if, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those. Uh, the proposal, hopefully you've seen the proposal, you've seen our cost. We, uh, put some estimates in there for a potential travel. Um, depending on, in the first round of interviews, some people are still doing virtual interviews for that first-round interview because it does save money. Typically, if you're going to, you know, interview someone, uh, we would ask that you'd consider reimbursing the candidate for travel, depending on what that travel looks like. Uh, but we would help you with, kind of with determining all of that. Uh, the other thing, I, I think I mentioned it, but if we're selected today, one of the first things that we would do is plan a meeting for the next week or ten days, kind of an onboarding meeting, where we would sit down and look at that timeline, decide how that works, would ask you to bring your calendars. And we get all those things in place, uh, because as, as I started out with, this is your search and we're just here to, to help that. So, thank you for the time.
So, so I'm sure others have questions they, they might want to ask, but the proposal, we won't talk about the specifics unless you choose, um, to share the numbers.
Sure.
Has anything changed?
On the numbers?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No.
And...
The, the one thing I'll, I'll point out, I think it's mentioned in there, we do, we do a price match. So if someone's offering similar services, but there may be a couple thousand dollars difference, but you're, you're thinking, "Oh, I really like Dave." You know, then just let us know and, and we'll do what we can to, to match that. Again, some of the, depending on the firm, some people do, uh, more broad scopes, some do less broad scope. Uh, and I, I don't know who doesn't, who doesn't. But again, if those are all similar scopes, we'll match that for you.
Okay.
And the, and the, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the travel search were just estimates on our part, just based on the experience that we've, that we've had.
But you, you, you max out your expenses.
That's correct.
Okay. And, meaning you don't...
Yeah, correct.
Always charge us that, that, there's a maximum amount that you should...
No, you're only going to, uh, reimburse actual expenses, you know, so if it's less than that yet, it's...
And I know you've estimated, um, reimbursement to candidates.
Correct.
What in your experience is the ideal number of candidates that a board chooses that would then, um, qualify for us?
You know, for a first-round interview, to me, the, a really good number is six. If you brought in six people, that, that's typically something you can do in a day without it being, you know, because you hate to get to that seventh or eighth candidate at eight o'clock at night and you're just whipped. You know, six seems to be a good number. Now, if you said, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to do two afternoons," you could do, you could do seven and then leave an hour at the end of that for us to help you kind of work through that process. But typically six or seven in a first round. And so if, if you wanted them in person, you know, we estimate about two thousand dollars per candidate. I think that's high. So I, again, that's a conserv- I think a conservative estimate on the high side. Um, you know, I, I mean, depending on when they, I mean, if, if you're calling them today and they've got to be here next Monday, then flights are obviously going to be a little more expensive. Uh, but if you decided, "You know what? We can save that money and do virtual searches." But if there's somebody local here, we would ask that they be virtual as well, so everybody's on the same playing field, if you will.
Okay. And, and how do you maintain the confidentiality of the applicants while we're in the process of selecting our pool?
Sure. You know, we do have, everything's stored on, you know, on our site, our, you know, uh, as much as possible that, that we maintain. We're going to ask you before we share applicants with you, understanding Michigan, we do understand Michigan's laws. Uh, but we're going to ask you to sign confidentiality agreements, you know, before we, you know, if you said, "I want to see all forty applicants," before we do that, we'd have to have seven confidentiality agreements. So we're just all going to have to have a little faith and trust, uh, that we're going to take care of that. One of our tenets is candidate care and we do everything that we can on our end. Our associates all know that. Uh, they're going to do everything we can to maintain the confidentiality of those candidates, again, within your laws.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions?
Do you have, oh, it worked. My mic sometimes doesn't work. Um, do you happen to have a, a type of portal or something that will include like all of the survey information and all of the applicant information that we can add?
You know, we do with the applicant information, where we would basically give you a password and you'd be able to go in and look at all the information, whether it's applicants, references, that sort of thing. Uh, surveys, we'll just, we'll send those to you, give you access to those. That thirty-one qualities survey, you'll have access to those. And I'm telling you, that can be a confusing one, so I like to walk you through it. Uh, but there's ways that you can kind of cut and paste that thing to where you can say, "What do our kids think? What do our elected officials think? What do our parents think? What do our taxpaying non-parents think?" You know, or the, so we'll do, we'll provide that information for you. But we don't have a dashboard with all of that in there, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. And then, um, I just have one more question. What, what's your success rate? So do your superintendents stay after two years or do they tend to want to leave?
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I don't have that data with me. I want to say, I, I thought I heard our president say, "We average about five-point-six years on people staying in their positions." Uh, we do offer a guarantee, a two-year guarantee, so that if, if a majority of boards in place and it just didn't work out, um, and it was something other than some catastrophic health issue and they had to leave, we would come in and redo that search for no cost other than expenses, but there wouldn't be another fee, if you will. And then we commit to you that we're not going to come recruit. If we, we placed Jim and he's the best candidate in the world, we're not going to come after him for five years. Uh, and we commit to you. The, the biggest one is probably the two-year, uh, guarantee because, you know, and things happen. You know, they just happen. Uh, yes, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Faltis.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
And enjoy your wife's celebration.
We're so excited. Yeah, we're, we're really looking forward to it. And I love being up on the coast, so that's... Thank you all. Thank you. Good luck.
All right, and last but not least, we have M L I. I'm Dr. Randy Lieber.
Does anybody need a break?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I'm suggesting that. Who would you let?
Yeah. We'll take a five-minute break. Dr. Lieber, I'm, you can stay. We're just going to take a five-minute break, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Pay better. Thank you.
I know I have to, but I've spent a lot of time with him.
Yes, thank you very much.
Did you have a PDF or something? I think it was... I got a PDF. You guys, okay, the end of the table. This one.
Hmm.
So, yeah, I just PDFed, I was still...
Oh, here it is.
There's a slide clicker here if you want to do your own clicks.
Yeah, I'll do it all.
And then my only advice would be, um, stay as close to the mic as you can, so that way the people watching at home can hear you.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. There's something, there's a key on the door. I want my keys.
How you doing?
I guess some weeks I was feeling like thirty hours. The second, the third.
Yeah. I was...
Do you need another small one? Okay. Together.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that you just...
You should be, you're... I should have tried.
You should, yeah, you should.
Yeah.
Right.
Kind of all that. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But she also... She, she doesn't... She... She... It's called discovery. She was a sneaky... Right. Sure. You know, if I just... Okay, so I sent you. Yeah. It's okay. So... Rose, the trash box is right there. So all the candidates... Everybody's... Oh, my goodness. I think you want to... Okay. Twenty-four. First down, but... Do you touch that or not? Didn't need to go. Three seconds. Probably, yeah, but really? Yeah. Yeah, so, um, it's like, uh, it's on my... Yeah. She's so... Yeah. I'm scared. The rose is... I know, and it's... I always... Well, it's... I get it. For... Yeah. Everybody possibly... So... I had to say what you said. Okay. Sorry. I was like... There you go. We can spray. So, I... I just heard, uh, and, uh... Run to the... Yeah. Yeah. It's for today. Yeah. They're all ready. Yeah. And then... He's... My best friend. Everything else. Except my... Remember, we can say...
There's that law. Yes.
So, you know, she... That's what you are.
Well...
It's...
Um...
If, if, if... I was... I was... I was... I'm like, bless. Yeah. So, all right. It'll be... And then we... So, there. I mean, it was...
Yes.
Then you know, you... That's true.
He was up there last week. Every Christmas. I haven't got a chore yet. And I'm so... And... Till the next day. Basically. He was long before. I think I was just... I heard him. And then he said, "So, I didn't see him." That was the first person to speak. That is weird. And I didn't call. I should know. Oh. That's not that. I wasn't... Well, you know, the... I don't need... So, I'm just... He told us he supports children. And I mean, I did. And I'm like, "Um, maybe I should..." So, that's not my bad. He came in and asked. He was there. He did... He was like... He lives on... You're down by Robert. Yeah. I have a blue barn she has. And I had a little friend. Cause they do... Cause they found a...
We good? All right. So, at this point, thank you for your patience, everybody. Dr. Leepa from MLI.
Hello. Good evening, and thank you for allowing MLI to be here and make a presentation to you for your upcoming, very important superintendent search. My name is Randy Leepa. I was a former superintendent in the metropolitan Detroit area for almost 20 years. 12 years in Levoni Public Schools, six years as the ISD Superintendent in Wayne County. And then I just recently, in my retirement, did a short interim gig up in Bloomfield Hills. And so, I've been around education for quite some time. The main person on this particular job will be Tim Stein. And Tim is actually the regional president for MLI in this area. And Tim is a former, longtime superintendent in this area you may or may not know. And so, he knows the area very well. And truly, when you hire MLI, you're hiring every one of the consultants that are part of the MLI team. So, the 16 names that you'll see on the back of, of the back of your handout identify everybody because we talk to each other when searches are ongoing. If, if there's a help that's needed in a particular search, we all jump in and use our collective knowledge, our collective contacts, to help out that local school system. And so, MLI is much more than just a search firm organization. We do a variety of leadership activities for local school systems. The two I would just highlight today, superintendent searches, we do a lot of. And then also, the superintendent prep series, we have a, what we call the Supes Academy. And so, we have developed, we've had over 900 people that have gone through this academy. And our sole goal is to help people, help to identify good people in schools that want to become superintendents and get them into the pipeline. And even let people know who maybe think they wanna be a superintendent, they go to the Supes Academy, maybe, maybe they don't want to be. But it's a great opportunity for them, is them and us to develop the pipeline here in Michigan to help out local school systems. And so, the MLI organization was created in 1998. Dr. Tim Quinn was the leader of the organization. You may not know that name in education. He's very, very well-known, and he's the one who started this up. In 2018, it was actually a very interesting and different type of partnership where they assumed the work over to the Genesee Intermediate School District for all of this leadership work that Tim Quinn had created over time. And so, again, our focus is leadership development and executive searches. We've done over 520 successful searches. And again, the Supes Academy, we've had 900 graduates go through that program. So, Y Michigan Leadership Institute, well, we really look at what the, our logo identifies in regards to the work that we do and that we can do for local school systems. And so, first of all, we develop outstanding leaders. I mentioned the Supes Academy. Nearly 25% of all current superintendents actually have gone through the Supes Academy here in Michigan. We also do executive coaching at all levels. And so, our team of 16 consultants are hired on occasion by school systems to help out their leadership people because we have the experience. That's what we do. We have all been in those shoes and we've done that work in our careers. Then, of course, as we develop them, that we deploy them, they're now into the pipeline. And so, the thing I would just highlight in regards to our process is we wanna be very proactive in working with local school boards in the superintendent search. And so, we don't want to be passive and just sort of let the process go through, but we wanna be active and proactive in regards to trying to find not only the best candidates, but the best fit for your community. And so, we'll walk through all those components with you and lead the school board through the entire process. We, again, we've done many, many of these searches, and so, we can help you so you can just focus on your main goal of identifying the best potential future superintendent. And last, I would just highlight that we support our leaders. And so, after the search process is done, one of the things that we do is we do guarantee the search. And so, if, for, if, for whatever reason, at the end or the conclusion of the initial process, you don't find a candidate that you want, we will stay with you until you find a candidate that you want. And secondly, even if the candidate, you hire, pick and hire a candidate, in that first year, if they leave for some reason other than a health-related issue, it just wasn't working out, we will then step back in and work with you again under the current contract to make sure that you have a successful superintendent in your organization. So, we support leaders in a variety of ways. And again, not just through this search process, but in a variety of different ways across the state of Michigan. And so, the network, I had mentioned, we have 16 consultants that all have experience across the state of Michigan. And as I mentioned, we collaborate on every single search. We work together to make sure that our collective experience, which is 460 years of successful service in the school field, our collective work together helps to bring you the very best candidates as you look at your superintendent search. Marketing strategies, again, what I would, what I would hire with that is that we want to be very proactive in the process. So, we will do the typical things. Every single search firm's gonna do a job posting for you. They're going to prepare for the interviews with you. But we want to be very, very aggressive in regards to, okay, well, who out there may be interested? Who out there might be a good fit for this particular school system? And, and, and we'll go out and actually, actually search. You know, if there are people that have shared with us that they're interested, we'll actually say, "Well, have you thought about this school system? Why don't you take a look? Would you consider applying?" So, we do the normal things that you would expect us to do in regards to posting it in all the appropriate places, the job posting, and getting, helping, getting the word out everywhere where people look. We know where people look if they're looking to be a superintendent. But then we take it a step above, and collectively, we say, "Okay, well, who, who else might be a good person to apply for this particular, this particular opening?" I mentioned the guarantee. And the other thing that I mentioned, that I didn't mention is that, yeah, some school districts like to hold or hire MLI separately from the search process to do quarterly governance workshops with the superintendent and the school board. And if you do that, we'll actually extend that guarantee to two years. So, let's talk about the superintendent's search process. And so, I'm gonna walk through pretty much how this would typically work. And the process overall is usually two and a half to three months. That's typically the time period it would take to complete a search. I highlight in that is that we're gonna focus it to your needs. And so, having done several of these searches in the past, I'll work with the board. "Oh, well, you can't meet them." "Oh, well, spring break is coming up." Okay. Sometimes the search may be longer, sometimes the board's more anxious to get working on it, and they've got a shorter time period. We will work with you in regards to whatever makes sense to you. But just think about it normally being a two and a half to three-month process. And step one is really the planning step. The big meeting, this is my experience in doing this work, the big meeting is the first meeting with the board. And so, we will sit down with you in that first meeting, and we will walk through every detail of the, of the process to hire the superintendent. Okay? When do we wanna do the posting? What do we wanna put in the posting? What do we wanna put in the community profile? Who do you want us to talk to? Because we gather feedback from community members and staff. Who do you want us to talk to? Let's now lay this out in a timeline. Do you wanna do, you wanna do a first interview, second interview? Do you wanna do visits? Do you want to have them come here and meet people? All of those components, we will work out to some extent in that first meeting. We will have pretty much the game plan laid out, and we will then get to work and start to put that together. So, typically, what happens is that first meeting occurs, the game plan's put together, and what we will do at that point in time is we will then draft the job posting. We'll let you look at it if you have any suggestions. Or, you know, there's a couple places you actually will provide, provide us some feedback. We don't do this ourselves. And we will finish that posting up, and that's step one. And so, and again, this is normal. Some districts want a shorter period of time, somewhat longer. But we would typically put the posting up for about a month. And so, over the posting, the job posting gets done, that's first thing. We've got the meeting, we've got the game plan, we've got the job posting done. It gets posted everywhere we want it to get posted. It's gonna be posted for a month. Now, we've got some time to do what I think is a really important part of the process, which is to build what we describe as the candidate profile. So, the job posting, even though it's specific to you and you'll provide some feedback in certain areas, if you've looked, if you go to the MASA or MLI websites, you will see pretty generic superintendent job postings, similar guys to what they look like. We really wanna focus again on what's gonna be a good fit for your community. So, that month, that's when we will go and take the opportunity to talk to whomever you would like us to. But typically, it would be staff and community members. We would set up meetings where they can provide feedback, and from that feedback, we do, we create a candidate profile. And so, every school system is different, right? Some school system, they need someone, they may need someone with a really strong financial background because of issues that they've had in their school system. Other school systems might be, we need someone who has experience. You know, there's a variety of, of different types of skill sets that you'll be looking at, and we wanna make sure that that's as clear as possible as we're moving forward in this process. So, we'll take that month, and we will work with whomever you want us to. And this is a great way to get feedback from the community and from the staff. And so, as you know, you guys are the ones who vote, right? You guys will vote for the next superintendent. But I know that many school boards want to get feedback from people in regards to who the next superintendent is. And so, we will go through this process of building the candidate profile based on the feedback that we get from staff and community members. And what do we do, what do we do with that candidate profile then? Then that will go into the next steps, because when that's done, and it's now time to start screening, so, next part of the process, posted the job, the month's done, we're gonna start to screen now for the new candidates. So, we're screening for those candidates, and we're gonna say, "Okay, well, one of the things we're gonna do is we're gonna have that candidate profile there as we're screening candidates." We're gonna do it as we're helping you do the process, you're gonna do it when you go through that screening process, is to say, "Okay, these are the people that have applied. This is the candidate profile. The people have told us they think the next superintendent, the skill set that they need and the skills that they need to have. Is there a match there in regards to identifying the candidates that we wanna bring back to interview?" And then also, in the interview process, we're gonna have interview questions, right? You guys are gonna be the ones, you know, we'll, we'll give you a bunch of samples. So, here are a bunch of potential ones. You guys are the ones who get to choose which questions you wanna ask. And one of the things that we suggest, you take that candidate profile and say, "Okay," again, I'll just use the example of finance. If that was really important for you, let's make sure that we have one or two really strong finance questions on there, because we're gonna give you like 100 questions that you could ask in a superintendent interview. Okay? So, the candidate profile helps to, helps us to not only screen the candidates, but then to develop the process in regards to how we're going to evaluate them and the feedback we're gonna get from them when they, when they get a chance to come in and speak to you. So, job posting, got a month, build the candidate profile. We have the meeting, we go through the screening process to go ahead and screen, and you'll choose, it's typically anywhere from three to six candidates for a first interview. Again, sometimes more, sometimes less, but that's, that's the normal range. You'll go through that first interview process. We'll then set up a process of what you wanna do in the second interview. You'll get the chance to provide us the feedback for that. We'll give you example questions, we'll go through the process, second interviews. And then the other component to that is if you want more information, sometimes school boards will do one of two things, and I've seen it all over the board. Some people are fine with the two interviews and they get the information that they need. Some then will say, "Well, we'd like to do a school visit, and we'd like to go out to where they're currently working to talk to people that they work with." And/or, they will bring the person in for half a day, and they'll get a chance to meet with the administrative team, and they'll get a chance to meet with some teachers, and they'll get a chance to meet with some parents. And so, that's another component that we would do for you if you wanted as you're going through this evaluation process. So, you got the job posting out, you go through the process, you screen the candidates, you pick the ones that you want for the first interview, you narrow it down for the second interview, and then at that point in time, if you're ready, and you feel there's a candidate, there's at least four of you that feel there's a candidate that you wanna move forward, then, then that, that would take place and the process would be completed. And, and as I mentioned, we also will work with you afterwards, you know, if that superintendent wants any kind of advice, feedback, someone to bounce ideas off, they can always use MLI that first year just to, to, to work with them as they're working through the new superintendency. So, that really identifies, and I'll just whip through a couple of these, a couple of these, because I really described the process to you. That really outlines, you know, what we will do as it relates to the process to help you hire a new superintendent. Again, I mentioned the timeline here, we've sort of broken it out. It comes to about 12 weeks, which is about three months. And our fee is $6,850. And then if there are any expenses for the consultant, so if Tim has any expenses that relates to this particular job, you ask him to go drive somewhere to meet someone or whatever, then he would have that mileage cost. But it, it never exceeds, never to exceed $800, and it very seldom ever gets up to that amount of money. So, that would be our fee. And again, it covers all costs associated with the search, the marketing, advertising, the materials, all the work that we do with the gathering the stakeholders, et cetera, et cetera. All that's included in the one fee. And again, we've got the guarantee that if the person leaves the district for any reason or the personal health of an immediate family member, then we would actually continue to work with you at no additional cost. This is just an example. I mentioned the 16 consultants. Here we are. This is the group of consultants with the MLIT. And again, Tim will be your main lead here. He's the regional president in this area. But if Tim needs any help at all, he has all 16 of us to work with to support him through this process. And so, really appreciate the opportunity to come and share that information with you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The background checks included in the base fee?
Yes, we wouldn't do any, we would, yes, whatever, whatever backgrounds work that we do is included. Yeah, there's no additional cost.
Do you only have, do you have other candidates available other than the ones that went through your institute?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah, we post the job everywhere where superintendent postings go. And so, MASA, you know, the, the state and national level organizations. And so, again, if you're applying to be a superintendent, you know where to look. And so, those, we would post it to those five or six different sites that are used primarily in Michigan. And at that point in time, we get candidates, but yeah, only 25% of the... Uh and at that point in time, uh we get candidates, but yeah, only twenty-five percent of the 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 candidates go through the Supes Academy, so we don't, and we don't have any preference because this is not our choice, this is your choice.
So Tim mentioned um that there was a discount for Genesee County School Districts.
Okay.
Is that over and above?
I'm assuming that's included in that number.
Okay.
But I'd have to verify that with him.
Okay.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't mention the specifics of the salary or the uh fee.
Okay.
It says here that you hired somebody from Swartz Creek and you may not know that answer, how long ago was it? Which superintendent was it if you recall?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
It was twenty sixteen.
And who was that?
Ben.
Okay.
Any other questions? Dr. Lipa. You you offer a personality and behavior assessment as well, do districts often take advantage of that?
Yes, we we are prepared to do that, I would say it's very seldom that that um school systems have taken advantage of that, so there is an additional fee for that. And so typically what would happen is when you get it down to a handful of candidates, uh we have an additional assessment that you can use and it's all about fit, you know, again, we're we're really big on the fit. So uh we have this uh uh separate uh organization that has put together this leadership uh sort of a survey. Um and they, what they can do is they take that information and come out and it sort of builds another candidate profile for you. So it would tell you on top of the candidate profile, because the candidate profile that we build is based on everybody's feedback here of what they want in the superintendent, right? And so that that would provide an additional piece other, outside of the interviews and the, you know, of course, the the kind of follow-up that we do to find out about, you know, the qualifications and qualities of that, of that individual. That would be above and beyond that, it's another tool for you if you, if you were interested.
And I'm hearing not a lot of districts take advantage of that.
No.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question.
Sure.
If, and we didn't ask some of the other groups this, just on the outside chance, we're down to four candidates and we don't have a consensus here, none of us really like he or she.
Uh huh.
Is there an additional cost, or do we pull from some of the candidates maybe that were in the top tier that didn't make that final four or something?
Yeah, we would, we would actually regroup with you at that point in time.
Oh, okay.
And we would say, and at no additional cost.
Okay.
Because the process isn't done.
Right.
And so we would actually regroup and say, look, there are four people that want any one of these particular individuals, and so what do you want to do next? We could repost the job and start over, we could pick from other candidates that were on the list. Um we could, you know, we look at the four that are out there, we'll provide those three opportunities for you and 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 you guys will determine what's the next step and we're gonna be with you every step of the way.
Thank you, that was a question, thank you so much.
So um I forgot to ask, sorry, um in the applicant review and selection process, the initial to go in the first round, how do you protect the confidentiality of the applicants? We know that's
Right, so what happens is on the form, on the, on the form that they fill out, the application form, they have to check whether they want their information to be confidential or or not. If they want it to be confidential, then what we can do is we can go into closed session with you for the initial screening. So here's what happens, because this is important, especially from a transparency standpoint. So when you go into that session with me, what you can do is you can, at that point in time, ask me any questions that you want about any of the candidates, you cannot discuss amongst yourselves in closed session. You can't say, oh, what did you think about that one? Well, I thought, nope, that has to happen in an open session. And so in closed session, you can spend some time with me and I can share information with you about those candidates. And then what we'll do is we'll come out of that closed session and we won't come out with names but numbers. And so let's say there are thirty candidates. We'll have, you know, one through thirty, and so what you will do at that point in time is, you know, we'll go through a pro- a whole process. And you know, when you make your first, like, well, I'd like one, three and seven, that doesn't mean you can't change your mind that we don't have like a final vote right off the bat, because that's your chance to talk to each other. And you can say, well, here's what I liked about number one, well, I was concerned about number eight when I heard this. That's sort of on my mind and you guys had that chance at that point in time, but you're still protecting their confidentiality. And so what would happen then is what you will, they'll end up being ultimately a a vote in regards to which candidates you want to bring back. What I like to do is anybody that has at least four votes, we will bring back for a discussion, and believe me, it's changed, that's why I said, you know, this is your chance to talk. So sometimes someone will say, well, I picked one, three and seven, but boy, I just heard uh the 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 board president share these thoughts and I didn't think about that, I really like number nine now. That's okay, that's that part of that process, but eventually you will come down to having uh at least four of you that will want to bring people back and that will determine that that final list. And so at that point in time, then you'll be in a position to say, okay, we we've got, and then at that point in time, when you, when you vote and say, yeah, we want one, three and seven, then I will announce, here's who one is, here's who three is, and here's who seven is, and then I call them.
At what point do you do reference checks?
Typically, um we'll do, we'll do some initial uh uh review uh before you do your screening. And then the, but the heavy reference checks are after you have identified the first candidates.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
It's very nice to see all of you and meet all of you.
Thank you.
Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. All right. Now comes the fun part.
Carrie, I just wanted to mention to you that there are a couple people still waiting in the conference room, just, I just wanted to mention that to you.
Okay.
They're kind of waiting for the results.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Um so we've heard all of the folks, um H Y A, M A S B, Ray and Associates and M L I, M L I. And um we have an opportunity to select uh one of the groups. I'd be interested in your feedback before I call for a motion and very interested in your thoughts, your reaction. Anybody?
I don't know, maybe for a specific reason, but I did like the first group, H Y A, and then I liked this last one. I think I just liked the way they presented better.
Anybody else?
I liked Ray and Associates. Sorry, Kim. Oh, yeah. They just seemed like they had a broader broader connections.
You've been here the longest, Ms. Jermaine, who've we used in the past? Who hired Jeff Hall? Or Ken, you may know that, took a hiatus in your back, no? Who hired Jeff Hall?
I don't remember.
You don't remember the name?
I don't remember.
That's okay, all right.
I wasn't, I was not actively involved in the selection of the group.
And then Ben was hired by this last group.
Yes.
And then before Jeff Hall was um Jack, Jeff Pratt, yeah, Pratt, yeah.
Jeff Pratt was our superintendent when I started.
Okay.
Do you want to go through each one and talk about the advantages or?
I mean, no one's really, I don't think, arguing about it, I liked one, three and four without naming names.
I, maybe they all do this, and it's probably a question I should have asked, but I, I did like that H Y A said they actually talked to the high school students. I don't know if the rest of them do that, I didn't think to ask them.
And and you know what, it's up to us to tell them who we want them to, so if that's something
I think the third guy said that he did too.
Yeah.
He said that was one of his favorite parts.
And and I I agree too that that students, as we know from doing the board workshops, they they're a wealth of knowledge.
Did anybody do a wage comparison? I mean, I did in my head, but
Yes.
Okay, name them off.
Okay, so um I spent a
Thirty thousand on number one.
It it's um, it's somewhere between twenty-six thousand fifty dollars and thirty-five thousand three hundred dollars, and that's if you were to have the candidates' uh expenses reimbursed.
Loan in, yes, that was, that was the first.
Right.
Yep.
That's, I'm sorry, that's, I'm starting down my list.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that's, that was Ray and Associates, my apologies. All right, so H Y A was twenty-one thousand five hundred base, one thousand dollars for contracting fee. Travels, travel expenses that would max out at forty-five hundred. And then there's some postings, postings expenses if you choose to use um those services that charge a fee outside of the normal associations.
Would you come up with them total, Carrie?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Can you disrupt that?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight five.
Okay.
Um M A S B, I'm just going down in the order that I personally reviewed them. Um just to to understand one from the other. Uh M A S B is a base fee of seventy-nine, twenty-six. And then there are alternates that you can choose. That the disc and the candidate review and the assessment and um and then the advertising. That conservatively with those items included would be ten thousand ninety-six.
Yeah, I came up with ninety-nine hundred, keep going.
And then um the last one is a sixty-eight, fifty base with a maximum of eight hundred dollars in expenses, which in in my experience, um there's minimal expenses when you have a a more local presence, because travel is pretty much um car and that's pretty much it. Um and there's a personality and behavior assessment, which I had asked about, which is multiple candidates totaling two thousand dollars. That he said people don't normally use and that total then would be nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh I think with it, so sixty, seventy, yeah, so that's with the two thousand if you chose to use it, otherwise back down and and it's about seventy-six, fifty.
And Ray and Associates said that they have a price match too.
But they're all, the the back three are all the same price.
Yeah.
If you ever take a few hundred bucks.
Yeah.
The the number one was like, I think it was thirty thousand two hundred if we maxed out.
If you want to consider the availability of executive coaching and mentorship, um I, and tell me, H Y A may have, who added one? H Y A added that service. Um and then M A S B has that service for a year for the coaches, for the coaching. And M L I as well.
I was a little confused by that, because I thought, I mean, wouldn't they work with the board to get, you know, if they were struggling or, you know, had concerns?
So um M A S B provides workshops with the superintendent and board. Um and then M L I does as well, and then H Y A gave us a document tonight that wasn't included in the original information.
Yeah.
And they will provide
I got that, I was just saying, like, didn't they want to work with the board too, like, is there something I can take or uh, I know M A, M A S B does trainings all the time and a few other ones that Jim probably goes, has been to. Like those are, we have memberships to a lot of those kinds of things already, I guess.
I think the workshops are more for governance with the board, board members and the new superintendent.
Our H S A, this one was the most, most money.
H Y A, yes.
Their, their three are just a little bit apart, Ken, they're not like significantly.
So maybe we should um
You eliminate one.
Try to save some money.
You, how about we eliminate some so we can come to consensus?
Yeah.
I think that might be better for us, and uh so who would like to eliminate somebody? I heard H Y A.
Oh, I I will be fine with that if two of them may come to
I personally am okay with it, I don't know about the rest of the board.
I'm fine with it.
So um yes, no, H Y A?
Favorite?
Mine too, but yeah, but they're the most, yeah.
They have the greatest presentation, I think, and the most detail. But
But I gave everybody else four minutes, a minute too.
But we're talking about a substantial amount of
If they can give us a twenty thousand dollar discount, then let's go with H Y A, Ken, I was asking. Yeah, but you can't hear it either. If they want to give us a twenty thousand dollar discount, then we can go with H Y A. That'll solve our problem, but I don't think that's gonna happen, they didn't have nothing to do with price match. So put that one right on your countertop.
I I heard, I heard a couple folks talk about M L I.
Yeah, I didn't like them.
Is this our last one?
We're down to three now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would get rid of M A S B. I said I would, I think we could eliminate M A S B.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too.
So you give, all right, now we're down to two.
Okay, so we have remaining
Have you ever did this way in a vault or just, we we did a process of elimination, let's go backwards like they want.
So, well, which isn't a bad plan, um so the um Dr. Falters, the Ray and Associate, and we had um Dr. Lipa from M L I, just to remind everybody. They look, they look on paper pretty similar in terms of their services. Does everybody agree or do you have any other thoughts on that?
I I I thought they were a little bit more Ray and Associates, and where'd you come up with for the final price?
Uh depending on if you choose to pay the candidate expenses, it's between twenty-six thousand and thirty-five thousand dollars.
They're quite a bit too, then.
Yeah.
They do have a price match.
How's he gonna come down to eight-five hundred dollars? Yeah, he's out of, he's out of the community.
And that was Ray and Associates?
Yeah.
Yeah, his base rate was twenty, then if you added on stuff, I think that's how Carrie came up with it, if we did Cadillac plan and ordered all the options. But once again, we
Expensive too.
Well, I guess we're, let me slowly but surely.
Okay, I just liked him because of the community involvement aspect and how he was
I liked him too.
Gonna
I thought it was nice because he was a breath of fresh air and he has no ties.
Right.
That's what I really like, yeah.
That's a good point. You know what? That's an excellent idea, so we're gonna spend the extra money with somebody with no ties?
That's right, I'd say so.
I mean, how does, I don't know, what do you think, Carrie?
I want to make sure that they have provided board and superintendent workshop and the coaching.
Well, he said he would price match, maybe we could get him down a little bit higher price.
And don't we have memberships to places like those?
You laugh?
But don't we already have memberships for that?
No, so this is different.
Yes.
So this is a workshop to bring the the two parties together, the board and the new superintendent, to um establish governance norms and those types of things. It's also to executive coach or mentor the superintendent for a year where they have access to that group um to ask questions anytime they need to or want to. I know I've talked to superintendents who have access to that and they say it's incredibly valuable, especially if you're a first-time superintendent, to be able to phone a friend to ask questions.
Yeah, that's where I'm just a little hung up, because like if, if we're the boss, right, the seven of us, and they've got questions, shouldn't we be able to answer those?
I I don't think so.
Shouldn't we be able to?
These are people that are experts and experienced superintendents that they're asking.
I think it's more like a peer-to-peer, like a support group where that they could go to, um I get it, I ju- I come from the association life, so I get that. It's good.
Yeah.
And it's good from a development standpoint.
I just I just, like, it's all about finding a key fit with our community, yet we're reaching out to outside of our community for help on how to fit in with our community. I guess that's my, that's the hang-up I have with it.
Yeah, that was the great social.
Yeah.
He's from outside.
No, no, I mean, like, what she's talking about, the extra programs that they're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wa- I wonder if the programs are are district-related, so maybe they have one that's like Genesee, Lapeer County, Chiwasi, to where it's those groups. I don't know. I I'm wondering if they have something that's targeted.
Yeah, it would almost have to be because I don't agree with.
Yeah.
I'll I'll just share this. M L I, you can read her in this paper. Before I listened to that man talk, I wrote nope. After I got done listening to him, I actually really liked him.
Ray and Associates.
No, the last, the last, yeah. Uh I I literally wrote nope because I had my issue with uh someone as close as uh Tim. Tim was the superintendent in Flushing.
Right.
Uh what I will say is the gentleman that done Ben's was the Davison fellow. What was that little shirt guy's name, if you remember, Carrie?
Doctor Sil- uh John Silvery.
Was it? Yeah, and I I don't think the fact him being here locally was a factor during the process. So that's just, just a thought, you know, but that guy totally changed my opinion of his, to his, to his spiel. So I'm glad you guys got down to the last two because them were the two I wanted. And so that one, you guys did a great job.
I I can tell you what I do remember about the M L I experience last time is they were very accessible. Very accessible. If we had any questions or concerns, very accessible.
And and just like I said, Tim, Tim's not a bad guy. He was a very good superintendent over at Flushing, from what I understand, the people I know. But the 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 closeness kind of paranoid me at first, but I knew, like I said, I liked the presentation he put out. Um so whatever that's worth, you guys throw a name up when I call.
Well, like you said, the last guy, I was kind of the same way. He's a little bit dry, but he's all about business. He knew what he was talking about. So but I like Alyssa Alyssa's idea, too, but I I don't know. I'm I'm kind of, I could go either way. Maybe we should have a hand to the public. I don't know, maybe. That's a little unorthodox, but we have a small crowd and uh just do a number. Can anybody do a number for? Hey, you know what? That's the public. That's who we represent. Man, they're all giving me different numbers. At least nobody gave me one. So they they all did this, so I'm glad that nobody flipped me off today. Last month was a little spicy. So um uh I, yeah, everybody's got different numbers, so, okay. Make the suggestion then. I've got. Hey, who?
Well.
I I said I'll take you over the question.
When did this ever happen at a board meeting?
Actually, I guess uh he changed my my attitude about it. But he's not the one that's gonna be your help, see?
Yeah.
So, you know, keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Just for all an agreement, maybe we could just give the, a vote to see who supported.
Yeah.
We just gave a four to three vote of a new superintendent.
No, thank you. Alright, so if everybody is okay expressing their final choice, are we ready to do that?
Sure.
Okay, I'm Sue, I'm gonna ask you.
Okay.
If you will just keep track, if you'll ask each person and then keep track.
Yes, absolutely. I'd be happy to.
The last superintendent's pick, was he a good one?
No.
The last one, he said that he used to be a core. It was when they had, when we hired Ben May. Yeah, I mean, he got a, he was a great singer.
You were.
He was great.
Satisfied with his.
Our test scores went down in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, 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 I'm I'm thinking about that and we got a fifty million dollar.
I I don't think you can confuse the search firm.
Right.
With an individual.
That that's true, that's true.
I didn't care, that was.
Yeah.
I just had an opportunity.
Alright, let me get this right. You guys are going, you guys are in between um M L I and Ray and Associates. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Alright. Dr. Falters and Dr. Leepa. Yes. Okay, am I asking?
Yes, please.
Um who their number one is, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Ken, who is your number one? Alright, Alyssa?
Ray and Associates.
Okay, Kim?
Uh Michigan Leadership.
Carrie? M L I. Chuck?
Ray and Associates.
Autumn?
Ray and Associates.
Uh oh.
Well, I said that it's from the game.
We got a corner. That's great.
Okay, I can, well, let's talk about this because it sounds like we were in somewhat of agreement and then now we're not. So so let's talk about what's important to us as a board as we move forward. I'm going to warn all of you and and Ken, you're the only other person who's been through this. It's an intense process and it will take a lot of our time. Um even though you're hiring someone, you have a lot of meetings, you have a lot of of uh review, a lot of reading, a lot of participation. And um before we choose someone or the others, the six or eight or four or six, you have to be sure of who it is that we are going to bring in. And all of that upfront work that they talked about, the planning, the profile that will be created, the um feedback from the community is really, really important um in terms of proceeding here. So and then in the planning phase, depending on, you know, when we decide to initiate this and give them an idea of when we want to have someone in place, which we've talked about July first next year. And we talked about the importance of timing, um but that's part of the planning phase. So can we talk about what's most important here?
Having a good candidate. It doesn't really matter the cost. It's it's, this is a one and done. So we should not, maybe we should not look at the price and just look at who's the best firm uh to get a great superintendent to get this district, you know? Ray and other things.
There was one thing that stood out for me, you know, Ray and Associates. I don't know which made you turn around, but they actually put uh, I put it out to Alyssa. One of their back pages, they actually had the last three school districts, they did Bay City and whoever, but they had their board president almost like talk to them. Um it's it's towards the back, the back. I thought that was, I thought that was, that was something that was different compared to your group. I thought, I thought, you know, that was something that caught my eye. And the Bay City School District, just like the old Swartz Creek teacher up there, this superintendent, right, hanging on. He left for you to move up to Bay City.
Oh, good.
Not that any of that matters.
Well, no, it 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 does, Ken. That that's valid information. And remember, Ray and Associates said they would massage their price a little bit, so they are one of the more higher ones. But if we feel comfortable with them, but our only gig is that, is the price. Uh who would contact him to get the price down?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not afraid to ask.
I mean, I don't think he'll come, but he said he would work with us, so I mean, that that is some relief. But I don't know if I want to save two or three grand and not have somebody pick the absolute best candidates and not have to go through this for a while.
What else is important? I pointed out the workshops and the coaching. Is that important to us? Jim, I don't know if they have access through uh state associations for that kind of coaching.
Yes, through the professional organization, M A S A. Also, G I S D does a wonderful job with mentoring. The only thing that I'm not sure of is the workshop that you brought up, which I think would be important, but uh G I S D has some really great supports for new superintendents.
Okay, thanks. Is timeline a factor for anybody? Keep in mind, we're gonna back up the train from whenever we want someone here or to be um not necessarily here, but to be selected. Ray and Associates, um according to my calculation, is about sixteen weeks. H Y A is twelve to sixteen weeks, depending on the services you choose. M A S B, twelve to six, I'm sorry, twelve to fourteen weeks, and then M L I is fourteen weeks.
That's all the same? Roughly.
And Alyssa, he said that there was, what was her name?
Is that the same? I mean, the timeframe? Okay, yeah.
Okay, close.
Yeah.
We've got.
We start in October, we should be done.
Even if we're done in February, it's still okay.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's just one more month we got to. I'm messing with you, Jim.
That doesn't mean they'll come here in February. Many of these folks will want to stay at their districts until.
July first.
July.
Okay.
I heard that, yeah.
Let her, let Miss Sue call it off again. Oh, that's a great idea. Yeah, you gotta always rotate.
I'll do a little mix-up, okay?
You always gotta mix up the votes.
Alright, I'm gonna say Kim Winter.
M L I.
And I'm gonna say Chuck Mulkey.
Ray and Associates.
And Ken. And Carrie.
M L I.
And Autumn.
Ray and Associates.
And Alyssa.
Ray.
Alright.
Alright. So it looks like we are going to um invite Ray and Associates. And with that.
And you got the stipulations you're talking to with some type of uh you can start out the price match, but then get a reduction.
And if they can't?
Well, then we'll be back here next month discussing this. And uh we will come up with a new system. Maybe we'll do a bingo card or something or a uh rock, paper, scissors or something because we ain't bad and great anyways, so we might as well go back to that.
Yeah, I don't really want to.
No, I know that.
Yeah.
But even even that worst-case scenario, we still got enough time, right?
Yeah.
I mean, worst-case scenario.
Let's find somewhere else.
But we don't want to wait too long because basically November and December are very challenging.
Yeah.
Um so they don't, they don't really count in terms of.
So if we read this.
Alright.
I'm studying your series, so.
No.
We can't have her come back and go, that number's worse.
Right.
I mean, that's not fair, Carrie.
Can I have?
We should give her, we should give her some guidance or mentorship. Otherwise, she's gonna bring something that's great and we're all.
Can I have the number that it is right now, Carrie?
Right now, it's the for the for Ray?
For Ray.
It's between twenty-six thousand and fifty dollars and thirty-five thousand and three hundred dollars, depending on whether you do the um reimbursement of candidate expenses.
Fifteen or.
I would go one step further and say I would have asked them to meet the lowest lowest price. And then start there, right. I'm gonna, I would start there, which at this point, base plus expenses plus any kind of assessments would be close to ten thousand. It's ninety-six fifty. I'd start there and go up, but um keep in mind, we also have people that can be watching right now. So um I I do have to have a number uh to go to them or to actually put into this resolution that we have. I would suggest when we get to the resolution part that we say as negotiated. So um anything else on the price? So so somewhere in between.
Do we just cap it, maybe? No, don't do it, yeah?
Okay.
Alright.
What you do, what you do right now is you you risk the the twenty-six thousand fifty dollars. Um candidate expenses um are reimbursable, but that's that's not something we're likely to have to do at two thousand dollars a person, you know? Okay, so I'll start, start at the the one that they can match and see where we can go from there. Okay? Alright. And then we have a, is that, are we good with that? Anybody else have any questions, comments on that? Are we gonna read the resolu- right, right? Um the resolution is, I'll read the whole thing. This is a a whereas, which is not part of the res- resolution. Whereas the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education recognizes the importance of conducting a comprehensive and professional search process to select the next superintendent of schools and whereas the Board of Education has reviewed proposals and interviewed qualified firms with demonstrated expertise in facilitating superintendent searches. And whereas after careful consideration, the board has determined that engaging with service, the services of, fill in the blank, will best support the district in identifying and recruiting highly qualified candidates who reflect the needs and values of the Swartz Creek community. And whereas the agreed-upon fee for said services is currently blank, as outlined in the proposal submitted to the board. Now therefore be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education hereby approves the selection of named firm to provide superintendent search services at the fee of and then fill in the fee. Be it further resolved that the sort, the board president and interim president superintendent are authorized to enter into an agreement with said firm consistent with a proposal reviewed and approved by the board and to take any necessary actions to carry out the intent of this resolution adopted this day of this month, two thousand twenty-five by the Board of Education of Swartz Creek Community Schools. That is it.
Why did we leave it? Wait, did we not just vote on it, though? Like, do we have to read the resolution once it's decided?
Uh we can go back in and fill in the names and the dollar amounts. I'm giving you what is it says.
No, yeah, I have it in front of me. I know what it says. I just didn't know, once we vote on something, if the resolution has to be read.
I would be reading be it resolved, right, the Swartz Creek, and that's the part that I would read for this.
She just wanted to make sure that the Ray and Associates were in there with the negotiated prices and blanks. I think that's what she's looking for. That's kind of what I'm looking for. That's all.
So I would say the agreed-upon fee for said services as negotiated.
Correct.
And in the name of the firm that we chose. Right. But I wasn't doing that. I was just reading for the purposes of. Okay?
I like that they're outside the district and they don't have any connections. I think that way, that'd be good.
Alright, we're in agreement, then. It'll say, whereas after careful consideration, the board has determined that engaging the surface services of Ray and Associates will best support the district in identifying and recruiting highly qualified candidates who reflect the needs and values of the Swartz Creek community. And whereas the agreed-upon fee for said services is as negotiated, as outlined in the proposal submitted to the board. And then I'll repeat that in the selection of the name of the company and the firm name will go there and then the services as negotiated. Any changes we want to make to this before I call for a motion? Alright, the goal will be to start at the match fee and go from there. Alright, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Still moved.
Chuck? Support? Kim? Comments or questions? Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Andrea Fick? Oh, sorry, she's absent. Cam Winter?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Chuck Moki?
Yes.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, Sue. With that.
Was that seven or six? I couldn't hear it.
Six.
Six, okay. I was making sure.
With that, we have come to the end of our agenda. Um, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Well, it's, it's not on our agenda. But if you'd like to see a few words, Chuck, go right ahead, Cam. I'd like to let the folks go that are sitting out there.
You are dismissed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you.
Sorry.
I, I assume that we would have more cards this morning. Never know what those will be about. Uh, first up is, um, our credit cards. Not that we need to vote on this tonight, turn next board meeting, not like, it's, it's new business a little bit, just where we wanna put it. Um, in our current board policy, I don't wanna take the time to work it out. I would like it to reach a superintendent or move it, does it need to be part of that? Away. There'd be a superintendent's job to look at now credit cards. I would also like the number to not exceed three percent, seventy-five percent, five percent takes us to two point five million. And it's obvious how much it's only gonna go up. Uh, I don't think it's ever gonna doubt it. So I think three percent would be more than, more than enough sufficient unless someone can tell me otherwise. I also would like, uh, to go back to what we originally did with this with credit cards. And I, I made this up, but I think I've got, uh, each building principal, not assistant principals, principal have a credit card, the athletic director, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the administrative assistant to the superintendent of board. Um, I think the rest of these credit cards can be dissolved. It's not necessary. I checked, trying to mind, was the superintendent over at Linden? Linden has one credit card. Lady in the office has it. You wanna buy something? You either send her an email or you give her a call. She creates a P O, she takes your information, she orders. Uh, if the superintendent wants to go on her tree or wherever else they wanna go, he has to go see her. Uh, I'm not gonna try to get that restrictive. But when we come to the next board meeting, I would like that on the agenda so we can vote on it. And if anyone has any questions, I'll just read. Um, yeah. Um, next up, on our, on our board policy, we need to hit this in the policy meeting. But whenever we have a complaint against a board member, I wanted to make sure that it reads in there that the superintendent nor any other administrators are involved in it. That is a board issue. I believe it should be governed or run by the vice president and the president. Um, superintendent shouldn't be involved. As I said to Jim in our meeting, I don't think his administrators, like teachers, are doing the investigation on the administrators. Thinking that's slippery slope. And I'm not saying that Joe did any investigation. He just hasn't had his hands in it. He should take one out. Next, next thing on my, uh, agenda. We kicked the can down the road. This should've been put on this agenda. In reference to hiring an attorney, I'd like that put on the next agenda, investigations. We, um, everybody agreed that what Chuck presented, I guess no one can read that page and a half at the board meeting. But, um, here we are, we've kicked it down the board in another board meeting. We're gonna start going down to one board meeting in the bottom. And, and we're just kicking the can down the road. So that needs to be put on the next, next, uh, the next agenda. And last but not least, this was the one that really upset me, getting pretty fired up. After the, the complaints that were investigated, do you mind if I say it? You may.
No.
After the, I was talking to Chuck. I'm joking. Um, after the complaints, I'm serious though, the complaints committee against Autumn. I, I can understand the one, I think you're about our policy. We didn't need to go to Tru, but I can understand it. That was the, the one comment that we through a person in the audience. But the next one, when I read the email that was left by that individual, there was not a name mentioned of who made the post, you know, in a social media forum. That person's name was not disclosed. Nor was the board member who supposedly leaked it. So my question is, and I'm gonna direct this to both Jim and Carrie, you don't have to answer it. But it'll let everyone think about this. How did we come to the conclusion that it was Autumn? And who made that decision? Because you'd said, Carrie, you were on time and you got Joe through it. So who decided that Autumn was the anonymous person in that email? I mean, I, I could read the email if anyone would like me to. But we all read it that night. I don't think I need to. I'm online. How did we come to the conclusion that it was even Autumn? Furthermore, the selling of property has to be done with public. So if we, if that was confidential as a board in a school district, we were breaking the law. And so it was true, my goodness, I got it, which we didn't. But if, so even if she would've been the one to do it, it should've never been investigated. Everybody here knew that the selling of property has to be done with public time. We spent sixty-two hundred dollars to have Tru get investigated, a little over an eyebrow, took a decent hour. We paid them sixty-two hundred dollars to investigate a board member that in my opinion, and I'm not pointing a finger at anyone, but the borderline is almost like a witch hunt. Because at that same time, Chuck Melty's made complaints, Josh Davis has made complaints, and they have thrown that down beers. And this is stuff that I gathered, this information. I'm not, I'm not sticking up for these people. This, every one of these are directed back to Autumn. Josh did a, a FOIA. And if you, again, go back to our board policy, it is the duty of our president to bring his appeal of that cost to the board. For the board to render a decision. We've never seen that appeal. I have seen an email that was sent. Uh, I'm not gonna say anyone received it because I don't know. But I also don't believe in coincidences. And, and I, I, I really believe that a board we owe Autumn an apology. And you must make this very clear. I do not know Autumn. I know her dad. I didn't even know that that was her dad until I spoke. I knew him math for years. I didn't even know that was her dad. I don't know anything about her. So this is, and I'm not so, so box for her. That's, how many times do we hear people come in and complain to us as a school district that they feel bullied by a teacher or a staff or an administrator or a kid or whatever? We just bully the school board. And if we go correct it at this level, how can we expect our administrators and our staff to do anything different? Because she has been bullied. That investigation should not have been done, the one in particular. So I, I, I come in here with one attitude. And I still may have that attitude in another week or two. I'm willing to die tonight because we're going outside our boundaries here. But Autumn, I will say to you, and I wasn't here for all of it. I apologize. I apologize because everybody stood back here and watched us happen. And I was on the board when Tru got this. Um, there's, I mean, even since this has happened, now we have someone else in the district harassing her father. Because again, I don't believe in coincidences. So again, it's still going on. And it's gonna stop because if it doesn't stop, we'll start removing people from here.
Are you done, Cam?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, because you don't know that someone in the community called me and told me information and then followed it up with emails.
Nope, that should've been part of the investigation. It was not included in there. That's not included.
May I speak, please?
Yes, go ahead.
And the investigation was initiated because of the behavior toward a community member initially?
I co-signed that one. When I just spoke, I co-signed that one.
Okay. That person in the community has not received an apology that I'm aware of.
That's between her and Autumn. I can't control that.
We were also reminded by the attorney in his summary to be very careful and to understand that although it wasn't deemed unethical or unlawful at the time, that an investigation of the comments that were made, if it resulted in any false comments towards the community member, could be a different result.
And that, and that's fine. If that individual chooses to do civil litigation against whether it's Autumn or Autumn, that's, that's their business. Again, the evidence, again, so if that phone call, that phone call should be included. Then it's not. Tru, as far as I'm concerned, looking at their investigation. See, in my world of police work, if I don't disclose everything to the prosecutor, and the prosecutor doesn't disclose everything to the defense attorney, that's breaking the law. Tru did not put your phone call in. I, there, so either they didn't look at it, or they less deliberately left it up, which if they're doing a net of sixty-two hundred dollar investigation for us, they shouldn't have left it up. That phone call should be included. It should include the who, the why, everything else. And when you read the email, the email does not disclose the board member's name, nor does it disclose a person posted there. So again, we did secret squirrel stuff. If we did provide that to Tru, that's even more disturbing than what I just brought up. Like I said, the first one I can kinda buy into, that's fine. I, I think if you go over, run our board policy, I don't think anything was broken. That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. The second one, I wanna know, how did we come to the conclusion to make her instead of Kim or Alyssa or Chuck a culprit in that? Because there's no evidence. You haven't come true, and there's no evidence of it next year. That, that is, that is a problem. And that's where I leave, and I'll go back to my word, because the witch hunt.
So I'm gonna go to, anybody else who has comments?
No.
In all fairness.
I do. I discovered an email through these email FOIAs that we got, we received. And I didn't receive them all the other day when Jim put the packet down there. There's about another seventy-five emails. But I found an email that is from the administrative secretary going to Thru Law Firm, asking to investigate Autumn's conflict of interest. And I've got two problems with that. One is, how did we come up that she has a conflict of interest? When I sat right here and asked all the board members, Jamie and Rod and everybody here, did anybody sign an N D A? And everybody said no. Rod said no for everybody. Two is, is that if a, if a a legal opinion, once again, is sought on one of our board members, I wanna know who sent it and why wasn't the rest of the board informed of it? Because it's not for one board member, it's for all the board members. I can't ask for a legal opinion to just keep it to myself, and I found that in that FOIA because it was never sent to me. So how does that work? Can anybody tell me that on the board? Did anybody ask for that?
Is there more context, Chuck? I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
There was an email sent by an employee of our district, the administrative assistant, to Thru Law. And says that Autumn has a potential conflict of interest because her great uncle owns property that the mega site wants to buy. And I wanna know, one, how did that come about? Who made that complaint? Two is, is this being sent to our attorney, why isn't the board notified of the legal action? Or what the legal opinion is? Three, if that's so important, then why didn't we investigate other people? They said they don't know nothing about non-disclosure agreements that I asked specifically on May twenty-eighth, right here in front of everybody. And, and I don't understand, piggybacking just on Ken, this is a double standard, this young lady. So I don't know, I'm not gonna tolerate it neither. And I don't know what we're gonna do about it, but it's gotta come to an end. And, uh, and I've also sent you a letter about Josh Davis's Open Meetings Act violations, at least one. And of at least three board meetings, verbally I've said in my board comments, what are we gonna do for him? Maybe we need to, whether we like him or not, or like her or not, or like that person or not, we need to at least give them a fair shake and have a third party look at these open meeting violations. And I've requested that several times. And I've been bullied, and I've sent a couple requests that have really been unanswered. You said just meet with the person. So, because I'm a bully because I talk loud all the time, which is, I give a lot of speeches. And I've had a couple teachers tell me that they're gonna keep coming at me after board meetings. We're gonna keep coming at you. We're gonna keep the pressure. We're going to, we're going to call you out. So what am I doing here as a board member? If I'm gonna be called out all the time because I can't really talk up here? I, I'm just wondering, because I think that's a cultural in Schwartz, a culture in Schwartz Creek. That's why we have a lot of students leaving. I had no less than nine, nine, ten parents come into my office in the last two weeks, and they're all, they've, they've already removed their kids because they've been listening to board meetings, or they're going to remove their kids. I know two families are getting ready to remove. So, and they don't want to. So I think there is something that, that Ken hits on, and I know, I, I'll say the same thing in my board comments. What are we gonna do on an independent investigation on the O M A's? And I'd like an answer still on, somebody had authorized, somebody to call Thru Law, our law firm, and ask for, is there a conflict of interest? And picking on her because her great uncle owns some property on the mega site. Our financial director sold her house on the mega site. She's in the middle, after all the FOIA requests I just received, that somebody else FOIAed, and it's on videotape where she's basically, along with some of our other administrators, negotiating a deal with the people she just sold her house to. If that's not a conflict of interest, I don't know what is, and we should be ashamed as a board that we're not taking action on that. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah. I just want people to have a watch extra too. The, the O M A thing. If you knew the O M A law, you would know that a family member would only constitute as someone directly related to me. So I don't know why we're wasting money on emailing attorneys to, and look into my conflict of interest possibly, if it's clearly stated in law that it takes five seconds to Google.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
Because I have not asked anyone to check into your potential.
Then who did?
I don't know.
How? How don't you know?
Do you know, Jim? When was the email?
It was in
July.
July.
Was it, um, if it was July, that would've been me. Why?
You instructed Sue to do that?
Uh, you know, you're asking me on the spot.
No, okay, I'm just, I won't, I won't.
I, I can get any email around that.
Well, it was an email that you provided.
We're asking you on the spot. Like, why did you do it?
That's a pretty important thing. It is, and there's, there's other things that come up, you know, if a question came up about incompatibility with Ken, for example, with, with being on the Clayton Township Board. Uh, I'm just saying, these are things that come up that, that we, excuse me, seek to turn for.
That question, Jim, our actual Brian Spence, supervisor of the, whatever it was, he was three years on the school board and Clayton Township Board for three years. So that, that, that was long overdue.
And when Ken?
Again, we either didn't care.
It seems like we care for just certain people.
Well, we didn't care to get the front, or the question, or the investment. So that may be the better question. Is did we care then and now we care now, or do I?
Here's the email, July first.
But the, the question is, it should've been addressed years ago.
That's one of the ones you gave. So I didn't even know about the legal opinion. I mean, I think we should've known, as a board, right?
Yep, because.
I, I mean, we're a board of seven, and it seems like one or two people know, and the rest of us don't. And that's the problem with the bullying and the distrustfulness and this now, I mean, I, I, that is just, this is clear convincing evidence. Autumn Henry, she may have a conflict because of the mega site, because her great uncle owns some property there. And they said, board policy 23-01. Yet my financial director here sold her house, and the whole time's been negotiating, because now that I've reviewed that tape, that was FOIA'd, you guys were negotiating back in November.
When we say negotiating, the emails that I provided to you, first off, were just what was sent from Tyler, what was sent from anybody that was related to Fugia. When we say negotiation, there was no surprises in there. I read every email that was sent. We all knew what Rob was talking about. He was talking about sending away for comparables. He was talking about sketches. He was talking about the price. So there's, there was no surprises in there.
It was a surprise to me that he was gonna combine the two schools. It was a surprise to me, and without board authorization, he was looking for property, and he decided with property. It's a surprise to me that, you know, we get, and you, you actually were disingenuous.
No.
Well, wait a minute. You slapped these emails on my desk, sir. You slapped these in, you said, Chuck, there's 10 board memos on there. Well, I looked at those 10 board memos. Five of them came after June 5th, when the, when we exposed that you guys were doing it. So, say, there's 10 memos in there that you read now, and I can read the 10 memos because they're very vague.
I read them already, and Rod was here, and no one said to Rod, you should not be negotiating. No one gave him.
Because we did not know it was that serious negotiating. There was nothing in those memos to state that.
There's several in there. I read them, I read them and dated them. I'm gonna provide it to anybody in the public.
We need to put them online so people can make a decision. And then, hold on. And, and then when you slapped those on there, and you said, there's 10 board memos, look at Chuck, and there's these 70 emails that were to me, I go down and download it, there's another 80 or 90 emails here during, back to all the way to September of last year, with Tyler, CC, and now it's this thing. So that was disingenuous.
No, I would, I would encourage you to provide those to the public. I gave you exactly what a FOIA was.
I wish I had a Facebook. I wish I don't have a Facebook. I'm not on social media.
Yeah, there's no disingenuous. I have never been disingenuous with you about this situation.
It was misleading.
Oh, no, it was not misleading.
Here's, here.
At any point, I've been superintendent for eight weeks.
You? Because you said a lot of things, and none of them make sense.
These are the memos you gave me.
Mm-hmm. The board memos and the emails.
No, no, them are the emails. These are the board memos, which might've came after the fact, after we discovered there was hanky panky going on. And then these were the emails that had my secretary download on that zip drive. So, so there's another 100 or 200 there. That's the real stuff. That was disingenuous by slapping this, this, and that.
I gave you an exact FOIA that was received with communications from me, Rod, and Jamie to Fugia. They were all in there. There's no surprises. There's no disingenuous.
So, I, I guess somebody came up and bought the $10 copy, and then they came out to my office and said they have the same thing as this. They didn't know that this was all on the zip drive.
We can provide whatever people want. I mean, I'd be more than happy to copy that for the $200.
I don't care. I came here, and I didn't get nothing extra.
There was nothing extra. You had the same thing that I read.
I got 67 pages.
Same thing I read in public.
Well, we're concentrating on Autumn and Josh. Josh needs his OMA's looked into. I've sent some letters. I've made comments at a board meeting. We need those looked at. We need to figure out if information's gonna be shared, legal information, it should be shared with all the board, not just one person. I'm not saying, but it wasn't, did anybody share that legal opinion? Well, should you have, you think? If it's about a fellow board member? I'm just asking. Well, then we do have a problem.
When there's an ongoing investigation, Chuck, do you share it with everybody?
When it's a board member, and it's a, it's a conflict of interest, yes. In fact, that's so disingenuous, Carrie, because on May 28th, when I asked Rod, and he said, no, there's no mega site, no offer from the mega site, just bear out with me. And Autumn actually said, that's all supposed to be done in public anyways. And she did say that. And I said, I don't know if that's true or not, but I don't know all the laws. And it was. Because the next morning, Rod sent out, once again, an email, which I can provide, that you guys were nice enough to provide me for, I didn't have to somebody FOIA'd it. And I'm a board member here, that it says, I checked with the attorney, and it was to all of us, and we do have to do everything in public. So how did the complaint get generated on her? When, which we don't even know why it was her, that there was something posted online about the purchase agreement, because we all had the email saying that it could be done in public. I'm repeating what you said, Ken, because I showed you the email. I mean. Right, that's right. And then, you know, you, you said some things about one-on-one meetings, which I haven't had with you since January, and you said you were discussing those. That would be against the law too, because you're discussing with a board member, which you said, I watched a tape, that I've discussed that with one-on-one on board members. That's against the law. And two, I never had a one-on-one, because it was always you and Rod coming at me, trying to, trying to get me to, you know, with the gotcha questions, because I ask gotcha questions. So, I don't know what, what, how we could even get to the investigation on her. Ken said, maybe that, that, that one word, her and, I don't want to mention her name, the, the victim, we'll call her.
Yeah, and I, and even information with that, it's because Autumn said that on, in her conversation with one of the shot jobs on a podcast, said she shared it with her boyfriend. That's where that came from.
That wasn't included in the investigation either.
It's not an investigation, Jim.
We gave them the video. They had, they asked for everything.
Well, if Trune's so good, why would they know that if we have to do everything in public, they put that as a part of their investigation to embarrass her last week? I have it here. The only thing we have from their investigation.
Yeah.
It's an email. Well, it's an email from, and I'll leave her name out of it as well, one individual. And it says, a board member and a post on a social media. Again, how did we identify her? Well, okay, so let's say if it was the interview thing she did. Trune didn't put that in here, and they should've.
They were given that information.
But why? But why if the board member was the complaint?
But why, again, but we know, we knew at the time that complaint was made that there wasn't a complaint, because it has to be done in public. So why did we even go through with the complaint? That's my exact point. But again, this is like, it, it, a real good, a real good attorney friend of mine, if I throw nothing, you know what on the wall, something's bound to stick. And it's, it's, that's what we're doing here. We, I ain't saying we, because I don't have a nickel on my dime. But from this, from this board table, from this administration building, we are throwing things at the wall. And they're, and it, I, I, I don't know, I don't know how you even still forward the complaint. And Trune should've mentioned all those things in there. I'll, I'll steal Chuck's word. From Trune's investigation, that was very disingenuous, because they did not include all the information they had.
That's true.
That, that's, that's called withholding evidence. That is evidence that should be, was gonna be used against her if it was going to work. They knew as soon as they got that, and it was over something being sold, it was done. So they just left everything out of it. It didn't, it was irrelevant. But they should've put that in there. We don't even know what they looked at. You just told us the two different things. A phone call, and now the interview. None of us knew that. We paid that man to sit here at a podium, and he didn't even tell the truth.
That's right.
And he's our attorney. I, I mean, I don't, this is really disturbing, because now it's even worse than it was when I, when I walked into this. But when I, when I listened to them, and that's why I gave him a hard time, is he, he was talking in a circle. And, and, and now we even know why he was talking in a circle, because he didn't even put all the information in his investigation. I mean, I mean, if anyone's ever done an investigation, I'm sure you have, Jim, because of what you've done for a living, you've investigated teachers or whatever. We all know you shouldn't deliberately leave something out in your findings. Your findings are your findings. What did we look at? How did this go towards our board policy? Well, it didn't. Not only did it not go to the board policy, but also, it was never confidential. And it would've violated the law if it was. They weren't gonna throw themselves under the bus. And then, like I say, what Chuck brought up in reference to the email that was, someone was probably given the order to send, this is the second time we've heard that.
Yeah.
Carrie had Jim send stuff about a board member, and here we have the superintendent sending stuff through an employee.
Not only that, but the superintendent doesn't have the authority to do that. But I did. I had the authority, I had the authority, excuse me. I had the authority to ask Jim. I was unable to do it. I had the authority to initiate the investigation.
Okay, Carrie, then I've asked for several investigations, and this lady on the email, this lady on Facebook calls you, get your personal phone number, and you start an investigation within two days, and I've been asking you for five months, looking at some other things, and I don't get nothing as a board member? You should dismiss yourself as board member. That's it, that's it.
Absolutely, because you're not being fair. I may be rough on people, but I'm gonna be careful.
And you know what? You just said it. Because I've been asking for that guy right there, well, I have no horse to race with him, that he can't get nothing done. But somebody calls you on the phone on vacation, you call Jim, and bam, boom, bam, there's an investigation on a board member. And one of them is just completely out of bounds, because we all had the email saying that it has to be done in public. So even if Jim heard that thing, then why would he even call on it?
In the July 1st thing, you didn't know anything about it yet, you had to, but you had to tell Jim to, to initiate that. Because Jim's not allowed to just initiate that on his own. As far as the July 1st one goes with my conflict of interest.
No, I did not. I was not aware.
So Jim just did it on his own without your approval?
I did.
Are you aware that that's not?
No, I'm not aware of that.
It's right in our policy. Yeah.
We hired every one of us to act as a unit. Carrie, you're the president. You go to your members. Your members group together with a common denominator. Then you can go there.
I know, I look forward to the day when we actually have a cohesive collaborative board again. No, I'm gonna speak here. Excuse me, excuse me, I have the floor. I am so tired of not having conversations that are focused on our children in the community. That is the reason that most of us are here. I'm not here to, I'm not here to disrupt the education of a child, or the people who support the education of a child.
Then you need to step down so we can get to that.
No, Autumn, I'm speaking here.
Yeah.
I, I would like to know, excuse me. No, she brought, they brought it up. They brought it up. Okay? Yes, you did.
Your charge of acting as chief of our grades.
I am looking forward to the day when we are getting back to the strategic planning of the education of our children.
Same, same, but I get.
No, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm looking around the room, and I'm seeing people who come here every meeting to talk about the sale of a school. The challenge of that is that nobody in the state, I, I, I would, I would love to find another school district that has an offer on the table for the sale of a school in their district.
Every one of us are affected by that mega site that our governor.
I've heard that, sir. I've heard it over and over again. But every single time those conversations are belabored, we don't talk about kids.
That's all I ever do is talk about the kids. I never talk about the mega site when I come in here.
Well, I wish that was true amongst everybody here. And you have the right to do that. However, we are not talking about the education of our students. I did a wish, after the last game, excuse me, Autumn.
You just.
After the last, after the last meeting, I, I wondered out loud if we could use artificial intelligence to identify the percentage of time that we actually dedicate to our students, to our children. Okay, that is not negative and is accusatory of the people who are so dedicated to teaching our students. There was national information that was published yesterday, Michelle, that compares schools across the nation, students across the nation. There's been a decline in achievement numbers since before the pandemic in science, and English, and in reading, sorry, and in math. We need to focus on that. I also got some information today about the literacy level, the reading capability of adults in Genesee County. It's very, very low. And if adults are not able to read, because for whatever reason they did not have supportive environments when they were growing up, their children are going to be less likely to learn with support. And so, we need to hit those things head-on, and we have a very capable, very talented curriculum director. I sit every month in the academic achievement meeting and listen to the amazing things that they're doing very strategically. The investment in the teachers, the investment in the, the curriculum, and it's all intertwined. It takes time for folks to learn how to implement those curricula. It also takes time for the kids to learn. And I can tell you right now, everybody is committed, just committed to making a difference. It's not gonna happen overnight. Are we all concerned? Yes, absolutely. I will never point a finger at a child. I will never point a finger at a child because their parents can't read. I will never point a finger at a child for their achievement level. We have to work together.
What, what are you talking about? Because you're the leader of the board right now, so if that's the things that you want, then how come the board's not headed in that direction?
So, I'm gonna say it again. I'll say it more slowly. It takes time.
Oh, my Lanta.
We have very talented people who look at our data constantly, and are looking at what we need to do to improve the opportunities for our students.
Yeah.
One child is one child.
And here we are.
When I went to school here, it was years ago, I can remember when this building was built behind us. I went to, I graduated in 66, so that's a couple years ago. We had one of the highest academics in the surrounding area. The only one that was better was Graham Blank. From then on, it just kept getting down and down, because of the lack of people or parents coming in and keeping the board on the right way to go. Look, we've only got, what, 15 people here? It used to be, when a board meeting was, my parents would go to the board meeting, and they would have to stand in the back because they didn't have enough chairs.
Carrie, no board's gonna work if you don't work together.
That's, that's, thank you. Mrs. Bush, right?
Well, you're actively working against me.
In order for a board to work together and be cohesive, they have to, for one thing, agree on the, on the problems that they're working on. I don't disagree with your concerns about the academic ratings of our school. It was shocking to me. But I don't see, since that board meeting, when that came out, I've seen nothing directed in that direction. I've also read articles where, I know, it's Louisiana or Alabama scored like, uh, like in the upper 80%. And they stated in the article that they use the teaching methods that the Michigan schools threw out. So, if we're having scores go down, and we're doing these K through fives and different reading programs, we're doing these like, let's try it. It's not working. Sometimes if it's not fixed, if it's not broke, why would we try to fix it? And you, you got kids learning math that parents can't help with half the time. You got kids that cannot read because reading is not as enforced. We need to really start looking at what worked with our kids when our scores were up, and what is going to help. I want those kids to learn. I want them to go out to be able to.
Read writing.
Go, you know, get those papers now.
So, go ahead.
Uh, I was president of a union for a long time, and I had a board also. And I've been going to Monday Township, Games, Hair, Education, all these boards. And in all honesty, the two of the boards that I've been going to, the atmosphere between the board members, it's just unbelievable that the, you can tell who gets along and who doesn't.
Tell you stuff.
But in this board particularly, our problems are so severe, and impacts every member in this room and our county that we cannot hide, we cannot personalize. We have to work as a hundred percent team and come together and. We have to work as a hundred percent team and come together and quit, quit, you know, passing shit around. Just get to it, you know?
Go back to the education where every kid cannot go to college. When I went here, we had shop. We learned how to change tires. We learned how to work on a car. We learned how to weld. We learned how to run machinery. If, and six, uh, six weeks of the year, we had to take economics to learn to cook.
We need some life skills.
We need life skills.
On who's holding what position and who's contributing what, and who doesn't like so and so. And we gotta start looking at the position that's being held, the responsibility of the job, and the cohesiveness that you and us. I mean, I've seen people get up here and give you guys up country. You know, that is done in such a poor way, but it's not achieving anything. We all want the same thing, but we're all going at it from five different directions.
I, I appreciate your comments, Mrs. Bush, and I have Michelle here, and I'm not gonna call her up. But this lady sitting back here in the corner is our curriculum director, and she's amazing. She has a very hard job. Um, no curriculum director has an easy job right now. Um, we all have to acknowledge, we came out of a pandemic, and that's not blaming it. We came out of a pandemic. It's, it's hard for kids to want to go to school. They have to build on a foundation that they didn't get during the pandemic in some cases. Michelle, I mean, there's just so much more that they're working on right now. The attendance, we've talked about that. Really, really working and focusing on that. We have an upcoming event at the Performing Arts Center that's called Count Me In, or something like that, that is going to bring families together to identify the reasons that their kids aren't coming to school. And getting kids to school, I think we all agree, is critical in getting them to learn. So they're focused, so that's why I'm saying, I, I, I hope and pray that we will get back to that point where we're really focusing. Those other things aren't gonna stop. The, the, the sale, the sale of a school is, is something that will continue to be discussed for a while. Um, but the kids are the reason that we're here, and we need to all have a positive approach so that they can be successful. And, and not everybody goes to college, not everybody goes on after high school. That doesn't mean that they can't walk away with the tools they need to be successful in life because of Schwartz Creek.
We, we don't deny that, but still, what happened in the direction of what happened.
Yeah.
That is so unnecessary.
I think that we need new leadership up here because it's not being, we're going in circles. And so, I'm, I don't know if I were allowed to, but I would like to make a motion that you step down. Chuck says something, will you point a new vice?
I wanna get off subject, okay?
Quick comment, and yes, this is about the children. However.
That's why I brought up the grades.
However, when we looked, when we looked at the data, who was the previous curriculum specialist? This has been a problem since two thousand seventeen, maybe even before. So what have we done the last eight years? This is not, this is not something new. So what we've done is, we now have another new person here. Like, I, maybe, maybe Jim, you can help me out with this question. How many curriculum specialists have we had in the last eight years? Weren't they special too? Or then why did, and if they weren't special, God only knows, why did we hire them?
Yeah, we had, um, when I first came down this road, we had a full-time curriculum director. When she left, it had been patched together for quite some time. Kevin was previous, Kevin Clare was previous curriculum director for a couple of years. Uh, this is the first time, uh, this year that we've given that position solely to curriculum and student achievement. And the first time in probably the last eight years that we've had a full-time curriculum.
But, so, so again, and, and I'm not picking on you, because you haven't been the superintendent that long, okay? What, what didn't Ben see? What didn't Rod see? Wheels are falling off the turnip truck. They, they, they get those scores every year. We're acting like what she presented, Michelle presented the other day was some new cutting information. So either A, it was hidden, and no one talked about it, like the crazy aunt in the closet, or we were too busy doing whatever. But, I mean, we had two superintendents on their watch. This has been crashing and burning. And so, you can sit and tell me, well, we didn't have someone dedicated to this position. That just tells me the previous two superintendents didn't do a very good job. They ignored something. Or maybe we can say as Rod walked out the door, he decided to try to fix it. I'm, I'm assuming that's who appointed her.
That's why we came back.
But, but I mean, I mean, the, all we're doing is making another set of excuses. They're not, they're not even reasonable excuses. They're not, and to sit here, and, you know, and again, Carrie, God love you, I don't wanna pick on you, but you've been on the, you've been on the curriculum thing since I got on the board in two thousand eleven. I mean, so.
And we have every single year, multiple times, reported out data.
But I mean, but I mean, the point being is, so. So should we say that?
That is not a hundred percent.
So we should, and I'm not even, I'm not even saying this, but if we're gonna go back that far, well, so is maybe the leadership from the board the problem at the curriculum? And no, I'm not gonna say that, because I, I don't think you come in here and educate children, teachers do. But, but again, we keep, we keep pointing to, well, we haven't had this, and we haven't had that. You've been the board president, you've been on the curriculum committee, Jim has been an assistant superintendent. Two previous, all, all of you, I mean, all of you should stick your hand up, it's failures. Because the failure started, was started before two thousand seventeen, as far as I'm concerned, but in two thousand seventeen, it dipped below fifty percent. So, for eight years, this administration building here has been a failure. I, I, I don't know how you argue that.
So let's just point fingers again. Yes, you are. You're pointing fingers at people.
Then who's the blank?
Instead of.
Who's the blank?
Listen, please. Instead of what can we do to help? What can we do to help students learn? What can we do to help families help their kids get to school?
We should be transparent.
We should have been doing that the last eight years.
You guys didn't even know about this grades I dug down into. Did anybody know about this?
No.
Because I, she says, oh, we got performance things. It would be like, oh, point three percent, we approved our third graders. I've got all the board agendas and all the minutes, and point six percent, and point two percent, we went up. And I start looking at this stuff about a year ago, and I'm looking at it, and I couldn't believe it. That's why I went to four different sites. Because I could not believe my eyes. I had other people look at it. And if that's the case, then why is Linden staying here? Why is Lake Fenton staying here? Why is, why is Fenton staying there? Washington did a little dip, but they came back up. So I took the surrounding school districts of our area. I'm not doing this to cause division. I'm causing this because it's transparency, so because the public doesn't even know it. And I hear them coming into my office saying, Chuck, I'm moving my kids. I got my little, you know, place down there, and I'm gonna do this, and my kids have been bullied, and I'm thinking to myself, that's kinda happened here. And it's not to make us look bad, it's to bring the pimple to the head, pop it, and get it going. And then, once again, we're, we, we were talking about Josh's OMA, and then we switched over there, great diversion. We need to deal. You guys weren't even supposed to talk. She's in charge of the board, so I can't really stop you, but she's here. And Michelle, you sent me an email. I'm not gonna get off, you did. You, you sent it on an official Schwartz Creek thing, but talking as a citizen, you asked me, why do you, why don't I let anybody talk here? It's really not my job. Carrie's the board president. When I let those people talk in my board committees, there was three separate board committees. That's why I let them talk at every board committee, because the public has a right to talk after every board committee. Just so I can answer your question, I forgot about that. So that's her job. But you guys are being, once again, I'm gonna use the word disingenuous, because when you say it went up point three, point six, oh, our stats are one percent, that's great, it's going up, it's not going down. But our grade level, unless you wanna compare us to some inner-city schools, and I don't wanna pick on anybody, our level is right down with them. So I don't wanna hear excuses about, oh, we're gonna work together, Carrie. Yeah, we should be working together, and we better get our butts in gear here and get these kids educated, because our grades, according to the four sites I pulled even from Michigan School Data, are horrendous. And I don't know how you can say, well, it's across the county, when I check, most of our students that we lose, I just know it from word of mouth, they're going to Linden, Lake Fenton. That's your seven hundred and fifty families. We don't have to worry about school choice. I think we should have some school choice. I feel bad for some kids. We need to keep them. But we get a, you know, I've never even had a survey. Rod said, I'll do a survey for you, but he never gave me the survey.
Jim, go ahead.
Um, so, me as deputy superintendent, we're required through Star to share our data with the board. Academic achievement, every year I bring the data. This year I called it the good, the bad, the ugly. We had all of our star scores up there in our, in our M-step assessments, and so there was no hiding it.
Well, it's how it's presented. It's misleading, no.
Said disingenuous. Being stated publicly, I, I'm not a liar. I'm not disingenuous, and anytime it's gonna be stated, I'm gonna address it. I was not disingenuous with the data. Yeah, but that's, you're pulling up, I can give you a thousand emails, a thousands, because I send emails all the time. What I gave you was specific to Fagea. It was specific to Fagea. What you're talking about is true and things that are not related. You got every.
Here we are arguing again. I think we.
I'm gonna stay on point. Sure, they're not gonna get me outpointed. And it has to have board parameters of the Board of Education. So you're deputy superintendent, you've been here for a long time.
Yeah.
When did we have an agenda item on it? When did we have minutes on it? And when did we set board parameters? Can anybody tell me that on this board?
And when was Rod corrected for doing these things that he was informing you of? When was he told, you can't do this without us? It was never stated. He sent it to you several times.
He didn't send us emails, he sent us memos that were buried in a letter with eight other things on there. That's what they were.
So, so you're not responsible for that information because it's on a memo? I have thousands and thousands of emails, but you can pull a hundred of them and say, Jim said this and said this. I gave you every email that was sent to Fagea from Tyler from Plant Moran. There were no surprises, there was no disingenuous.
This is what you gave me. This is what I pulled off.
And I can go print a thousand more emails that I sent. Are those all for Fagea? Everything that you have there? No, it's not. That is not true. That is not true.
That's what I have from twenty-three that you guys provide. I don't know what you have.
I'd be happy to copy and print that without even looking at it for the same price of ten bucks. If you give me that copy, I'll provide it to everybody.
I'm not giving them up to anybody.
Right, of course.
And so Chuck, we're back to not talking about the kids, and this is the.
You diverted that here to make yourself feel good.
No, I did not. This is something that keeps coming up, and this is something that.
Then why didn't you discover the grade point average going down so bad? If you were here for the kids.
I have been completely aware of our declining academic achievement. And all of the work that's being done. I would invite all of my fellow board members to, to come to the academic.
Make it at a time I can come to.
It is. We just moved those meetings. Next Tuesday.
Post all these.
Crazy, right?
And we'll post the video too.
I will tell you, we moved those meetings, which is kind of an. However, if people don't show up, I'm gonna move to go back to where we were. So, we wanna be talking about kids, we wanna be working together, but that takes people wanting to do that.
I ask that you should resign.
Yeah, yeah. I would like to motion, yeah. You step down as the board president, and we go ahead and pick a, a new vice.
I wanna, I wanna make a comment before we do that. Um, first thing I just wanna say, somebody needs to look into that tree at Morris, that gentleman.
Tomorrow. I will tomorrow.
The second thing I wanted to say is, um, as far as talking about the kids, doing something for the kids. I were supposed to be hiring six aides, kindergarten aides. That's gonna help these kindergarten teachers. However, it doesn't seem that, that that's happening. So I was gonna ask you, Mr. Kitchen, could we, could we get these people from Edges Staff?
That's where it's currently posted through, is through Edges Staff.
Okay, well, okay, is there anybody, is there any aides in the, the school already that we could put in those positions?
Boy, that's, it's so tough. I mean, they're, they're patching it now with the MTSS, at least for the first week or so, um. The only thing we can maybe consider is, um, putting a higher, um, per hour on it.
Can you say what, what the pay is here?
Yeah, so, so currently, it's, it would be between, uh, fourteen and eighteen dollars.
Does that depend on education or?
No, you have to have an associate's degree to be eligible for that.
Okay. Um, may, may, maybe if somebody's listening, then fourteen to eighteen dollars. Okay.
It, it's hard to get somebody to work for that.
How long have you been asking for that?
Three years.
Three years. Been asking.
Time I went into Mr. Heatherton's office, when I first got on the board, I asked for these aides.
Yeah.
And I don't even know if Mr. Kitchen was aware of this until like last year or something. Put it in the budget.
Yeah, I, I don't make budget decisions prior to Rod. I make them now. Eight weeks I've been on board, and yes, I make those decisions now.
For three years.
No, not with me for three years.
But no, I'm saying Kim asked three years ago.
She's asked every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Mr.
Kids read every month.
What I was, what I was first told was what I was first asked. Yeah, so that's, wait, wait a minute, I like to add on to that, just. Mr. Heatherton told me he would not hire these aides unless I could bring him information showing that that included, that that would, um, make the test scores of the kindergarten kids higher. But at this point, it's not about test scores, it's just about these teachers needing extra help in, in the classroom. Because you can't work with four students when you've got twenty-five other students, you know, doing whatever, and you can't watch them all. And when, when we end up with problems in the classroom, so.
Yeah, well, no. But that gets ignored.
As, as we're talking about, as, as we're talking about, as we're talking about this, you know, and we're, we're gonna talk about what are we doing with the children, what are we doing with class sizes? How much time, and maybe we should ask the teachers first, how much time does a kindergarten and first grade teacher spend every morning taking boots off in snowmobile suits and then putting them on at lunchtime? And taking them back off at lunchtime, and then taking them back, putting them back on at three o'clock? How many hours is taken out of their day of teaching dressing children? You know, a, a, again, you should have saw the faces that came from three, three building principals when I made the comment that they should be held accountable for the letters going out. It, it was, it was comical. Why don't, why don't the building principals look at that and go, wow, you know, whoever the superintendent is? Oh, man, my, I timed it, man, I just sat back and watched it. My teachers are spending this much time every day dressing five-year-olds. I, I, I agree, that's my point. And, and for every minute that they're doing that, they're not teaching. So, you know, where's that conversation? Where's that age of chief? Find a way to get them. You know, I, I, I don't know, I don't know the, I, I don't know the makeup of the buildings. But, you know, I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, uh, message from a lady that, I talked to her on the phone, and she addressed, uh, some things over at Cy Reno. The kids not having anyone any longer to help cross the streets, and so on and so forth. So, where, where, where did that go? What's that building? When did, what, what building principal cut that? If it is cut, I don't know if I should believe this lady. I mean, I don't know why she would lie to me, though. You know, so when we're starting to talk, and when, when we're not about children, it's a little deeper than just educating them. It's about helping them get ready to do this and do that, getting to school, and it, it's, you know, and another topic that come up, when I started talking about the credit cards, I had two different people calling me from elementary schools. We buy gas cards for parents. Really? Well, why are we buying gas cards for parents?
McKinney Bento requires it. If students are homeless, we have to provide that.
Okay, but I, I, again, I'd like to see the data on that. Are these just homeless students? Who's all getting gas cards? You ain't got a house, but you got a car. Yeah, that, that's, that's another one of these things. If, if we start examining these credit cards a little deeper, I think everybody up here will lose, well, almost everyone up here will lose their mind.
I would actually, I would actually welcome that, Kim. An investigation. I mean, I agree.
The simple solution to the credit cards is take them away. Because, because I, I, you know, handing out Speedway gas cards. Now, what, what evidence do they have to give that they're homeless?
Yeah, so it's basically, um, they share with us, they share with us, they're not living in their home. Or if they're living with relatives, they're considered to be homeless and we're required by law to provide transportation for them.
Transportation and gas.
Yes, well, either way, we, we have, we have done, I mean, we've done cabs before.
I would rather see us paid for cabs, because it's like, it, it's, it's like when you see the guy at the end of the driveway collecting money. I believe he's really got a problem if he's standing there, I mean, that's not what a normal human being would do, what's he do with the money? Well, that's the same thing with the gas cards, what is the gas truly being used for? Let's pay for cabs, cuz if I go to, if I go to Little Susie's house and I pick her up and I drop her off, I know that's what that was used for. I don't even care if it costs more money, because if you can afford to have a car, but you can't afford to put gas in it. That, that's an issue, so let's, let's do this, let's get rid of gas cards, pay for cab rides, cuz then I know what it's being used for. But handing out gas cards, that, what, what, we, nobody's investigating what's going on in that, in that world. What are they using it for? We don't know, we really don't. And if you're driving, if you get a twenty-five dollar gas card and you're driving from ten miles out every day and you make two trips. How many cars get forty miles to the gallon? I, I mean, that twenty-five dollar gas card isn't lasting long.
How do we know that they're, that they're going to the gas station and using it and not trading it for gas or?
Let's even assume they do though, if, if you're driving ten miles here, ten miles back, ten miles here, ten miles back, that's a forty mile round trip. That's two hundred miles every day or every week. You ain't doing that on, you're not doing that on twenty-five dollar gas card. So, a- 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 again. It may be the law, but let's, let's, let's get him a cab ride. Let's get, let's, let's get him here, let's get him in a cab.
There is no cab, you gotta call Uber.
Well, Uber, whoever, you know, whoever you gotta call, but let, let's do that and stop giving out free money. Because we don't know where it goes. No, no, these are kids at our school of choice kids that can't get here cuz they can't get a bus ride.
That's not true, they could be homeless and live in our district as well.
That, that's true, but, okay, well, you prove me wrong, I'll prove you right.
I would still like to make that motion.
If, if I'm, if I'm a betting man, we're having a problem getting transportation for individuals. That don't live in our district that are school of choice, I'll tell you what. Go see who you gave gas cards to last year and see where they reside. We didn't even know what was going on. No, there, there, there's a whole lot you don't know what's going on.
And Jim did mention that we're required by law to provide their transportation.
We also, we also should do due diligence and investigate that.
Yeah, I would also like to make that motion.
If, if we're gonna get, if we're gonna give money out, someone ought to occasionally follow somebody home and see where they go. I, I mean, you, you, you can't just keep giving money away. You have, you have a, a, a due, a due diligence, a responsibility to everybody that, that's a taxpayer. You know, you, you can't just keep giving this stuff out and no follow. I, I can walk in tomorrow and say whatever. You know, I mean, to get in our district, they have to provide residents, right?
Get in our district, you have to provide residents, yes.
Well, if it, if it's, if it's someone, again, if, if, again, we ought to look into that and see where they're living.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I, I don't know, we wanna send the police out to the house to pick a kid up, cuz they're not coming to school. But yet we have truancy officers in the building. Uh, you know, what are the truancy officers doing? Uh, you know, it, there's, it's, it's, it's a vicious circle and we just keep throwing money at it.
I can get you more information about the safeguards that are in place for the gas cards also, don't have it at the top of my head.
That's fine, I don't expect you to, I mean, cuz that, it's down the priority list, I totally co-sign that.
I just wondered, those gas cards, um, like if we give them a Speedway card or something. We don't know if this, it doesn't, it's not specifically.
Yeah, they have fuel. They have merchandise ones, they, yeah.
They are speed, most of them are Speedway and yes, they can do fuel only, so they're obviously getting fuel, I, I'm not gonna go that J F K conspiracy. But I would like to know where they live, why they live there, and, and they should have to prove that they're homeless.
No, we haven't, we have not even to public comments.
There isn't no public comment.
Here's an email says, have you run this by your board yet? From Tyler Ross. Have you run this by your board yet? So we were well informed. Email rate, have you run this by your board yet?
Who sent that to you?
Tyler Ross.
No, I meant, who was the superintendent?
It's C C U and it's a.
I, but I'm not superintendent, I'm not responding, yeah, okay, but, so it was, okay, so it was Rod.
Yeah, and the form memos you're talking about, there's misinformation out there. The, the, the mega site doesn't even have their property there, the only one that even hints to it, if you read through these, where he puts them, he buries them with letters. They said that I asked for a wish list of thirty to fifty million dollars, I'm waiting from them. That's it, yeah, I, I mean, in two years, I write five board members, the other five he gave you were after, after I discovered. On May twenty-eighth that you guys had an offer, which you were in the May twenty-second meeting with them.
Mm-hmm, halfway through, I'd join that meeting.
You're in the meeting.
Yeah, hey, my role in responding, I'm not gonna deny anything, I'm gonna be truthful if you ask me a question. My role, I was assigned Mary Crepo, I went to every one of those meetings, I was hit and miss on the bond, I was hit and miss on the proposal.
Michelle's gonna, she said she needed a year or two to get the grades up, I think that's what Mrs. Michelle said. And I hope that's true. And if you need anything from us, you know, we'll always approve it if it's gonna help the learning of our children. Which it was disingenuous for people to say that we're not, some of us aren't here for that, but we are. That's our main goal, the transparency is the most important. And be responsible to the public.
Yeah, still wanna make a motion.
Put your motion.
Whatever, they, to get back on track or to roll, to operate more smoothly or to, I don't know. Be a fair board is for, to have Carrie removed from the president chair. Which would move Chuck there and then vote for a new vice, which I would like to give my two cents and it would be. Keep doing this, I can keep kicking the cans.
Do you wanna read the motion, Carrie?
Do we have a second? Comments or questions? I am going to make some comments. I didn't ask you. It is all about the kids and I want everyone sitting here at the board table and in the audience. And where Travis is recording, to know that whomever might sit in this seat needs to understand. The number of hours and the amount of dedication that it requires. I'm not saying that because I want a pat on the back, never been the case, but the requirement of reading everything you get. Front to back, asking questions, meeting with the superintendent, attending the subcommittee meetings. Preparing for meetings, meeting with other folks as needed, being supportive and attending. Events in the district, making yourself available. That is a serious commitment, so whoever sits in the seat needs to understand that.
Our board policy says that the vice would go there, so that's not really just a. Uh, just a fun fact.
No, I'm not talking about that, I am talking about the number of hours. I, I, I will just give you an example, getting ready for the superintendent search tonight. I spent probably two days getting ready. All the information that I had to read and then go out and research, because I don't just always believe what they give me. So that we would be well prepared tonight to go through a smooth process. It's not something a board does every year and not even every few years. And I'm telling you that and I'm saying that because it's not a casual engagement. I meet and talk to the superintendent, I talk to people across the district. I talk to people, much like my fellow board members do, but I invest hours and days. Hours and days, Jim can attest to that. So be careful what you wish for, be careful what you get.
I'd like to make a comment, I, I, I don't need to take the position, somebody else will, I'll remain vice president. I don't, I don't need the position, but you don't need to be there, you just said you read every memo and email, but you never brought us anything about the mega site. See, we're back to this.
That's, that's not true, Chuck, that's not true. Rod was very clear in communicating to all of us, if you chose not to read your emails, that's your, your concern.
Don't accuse us of not reading our emails.
Memo, I read it, I can read them.
Please.
I wanna, just, I'll have somebody from Facebook post it, because this is ridiculous. Motion's on the floor, I'll tell you right now, we can vote on a new president, doesn't have to be. I'll put it in time, I've been putting in forty hours a week dealing with this stuff, to try to find the truth, that would be a lot easier.
Go ahead.
I'm taking from my business and everything else.
Go ahead. Can I ask a quick question? Kim, you made your motion, I know that, we don't have a board member here tonight. And I think this is very important for that board member to be here.
Kick the can thing.
I'm not trying to kick, I'm not trying to kick the can, I am not.
She's nice.
I am not, I'm just thinking of a fellow board member, this is a, a, this is a, a board meeting, I think it's important for her to be here, I'm not trying to kick that can.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to vote on this tonight, but that's cuz how the cookie crumbles, I guess.
It was just a question, yeah, I just, I.
You don't withdraw your motion. I mean, that's, that's what she's asking.
There's a second, it's time to call.
Yeah, yeah, we could talk about when Andrea gets here, if, if we choose to, you know. Yeah, I can't, I can't keep getting postponed because the can keeps getting kicked and then somebody doesn't show up one day. Like, when am I, or. I just don't, I can't.
Here's a letter, it doesn't matter, there's one that's something to carry that.
Yeah, so no, I don't resent it, if, we can vote on a vice when Andrea gets back or whatever. She's gonna have a say in it, it's not that I'm saying, I don't care to hear, whatever, I'm not trying to silence. Take that away, just. I think it needs to happen going forward so we can start getting things. Getting the follow.
Thank you, but I'm, I have enough on my plate right now, I don't, wouldn't wanna have to do what Carrie does.
Any other comments or questions?
No. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Alyssa Bouchard.
No.
Kim Winter. Motion that Carrie steps down as board president. Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine.
No.
Chuck Malkey.
Yes.
Ken Engel. We have a tie.
Yes, ma'am.
And that means the motion fails.
When we passed the bond, thank you, you just admitted it.
The motion fails. Robert's rules.
No, 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 listen, listen.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, you just, a year ago, we passed the bond and you said.
Right, exactly.
The motion fails. I don't appreciate your comments or your disrespect.
Use the kids to defend yourself, you put the kids in the middle, when we're coming out, when you're doing all this shit wrong, you put the kids in the middle, oh, what about the kids? Don't eat your flesh, you put them in the middle, you don't care a shit about them.
I do care about the kids, that's why I am here. All right, so the motion fails and if anybody wants to see the OMA language, I can show it to you right now that the motion.
Yeah, go ahead, cuz we don't follow Robert's rules, so keep that in mind when you show us that.
Robert's rules are not part of our policy.
Exactly, that's what we're following right now by saying that it fails.
Okay, all right, if there's, are there no other comments or questions, I'm gonna call for an adjournment. Support, do we have a support for adjournment? Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.
Go back, it's July twenty-four meeting.